Counsel, if you will come to order, it is 7:01 PM. On March the 22nd, and we will convene into a regular session. Counsel member Kurtz is absent at this moment, but he should be here shortly. In just a moment, I'll ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an invocation by myself and then led in pledges to the American flag and to the Texas flag by Councilmember Schaffner. Would you please stand?
Gracious Creator, we have gathered this evening to deliberate together, to make decisions on behalf of the citizens of the Town of Trophy Club. We recognize the tremendous blessings that you have bestowed upon us to live in this portion of North Texas, blessed with prosperity, in a town that is safe, with citizens that care about quality of life. We ask that as we deliberate, that we would recognize that opinions can be different, but yet we can draw consensus. We recognize that our thoughts can be tempered, and our thoughts can be guided, by not only our intellect, but by your wisdom and by your spirit. We ask, Father, that that which we do tonight would in fact be pleasing not only to you, but to the citizens of this town. Father, it is a time of sorrow in our country from watching and hearing of the events of once again of the loss of life in Brussels, where somehow there is a feeling that there is despair and loss and maybe anger, but recognize that life is precious and that all loss of life, you must groan as creation groans with that loss. May those people that have experienced that loss and that fear feel your spirit and your guidance in their lives. All these things we ask in your son's name, Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Citizens' presentations, this is an opportunity for the citizens to address the council in any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. I have someone who has signed up, Neil Toomey, who wants to address the council. Neil, if you would come forward, identify yourself and state your address, please.
I also have a handout that I would like to...
All right.
Neil Toomey, 203 Oakmont Drive, Trophy Club, Texas. Mayor, Town Council, staff, my fellow citizens. On October 13th, the council discussed agenda item number 14. That was a request from a former Town Council member, Bill Rose, for the town to join in his rate order appeal filed with the Texas Public Utility Commission. Mr. Rose made oral arguments and used visual aids supporting his request to the council alleging that the district's commercial wastewater accounted for 42 percent of wastewater inflows into the treatment plant, and that the residential customers were subsidizing the commercial customers. This is the fourth time that I have addressed the council on this matter. I've been informed indirectly that the factual information that I provided to town staff at Mayor Sanders' request and the additional information submitted to this council in writing on January 12th, 2016, has been dismissed as my opinion. Well, on the enclosed attachment, and hopefully it's made its way around, I have made a copy of Bill Rose's pertinent section of Bill Rose's worksheet, and I've also included the actual numbers for 2014 for the Trophy Club wastewater. Now, the sum of the columns on Mr. Rose's worksheet don't paginate too well, but basically if you look at the bottom, you can see he has 135,346, which really is 135,346, which he says represents 42 percent of the inflows into the wastewater plant, which he also represents in the next column of being 321,181. As you can further see, the what the district had as commercial water bill in gallons that year was 93,516,000. This means Rose's number overstated commercial wastewater by 44,830,000, or by 44.7 percent. So either Rose is unable to organize the relevant data properly, or simply doesn't understand how the water system works. Either way, he uses erroneous information and induce citizens to sign his rate order petition, including four of the present council members, in my opinion. As his flawed rate order appeal continues, citizens of the water district will be responsible for the legal fees. As former councilman Rose and mayor continue to criticize the mud, their frivolous appeals like this are an example of wasteful spending that they have inflicted on the citizens. This money could be better used to offset taxes, reduce water bills, repair water lines, or pay for capital improvements. So again, as a town citizen, I ask you, if you signed the PU's rate order petition, what are you going to do? For the rest of the council, your customers of the district too, and our elected town representatives, to let Rose's travesty continue is injurious to the citizens' interests, whether they reside in the town or the public improvement district, in my opinion. If you continue to do nothing or take a delphic action, you're actually supporting Rose's irrational agenda that is financially detrimental to the citizens who elected you, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. Appreciate the detail. Holly, did we have anyone else sign up to speak?
No, Mayor.
All right. We're down to announcements and reports. Item number one, Town Council, I mean Town Manager's Day's update regarding the following discussion and provide input regarding the saying, "Good Friday holiday, Easter extravaganza, and breadwinners." Stephen?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as an update, Friday is Good Friday, and the town offices will be closed in recognition of that holiday. Easter extravaganza was this past weekend. It was a little chilly and windy outside, but we had several hundred children there. I know that the mayor, you sounded the horn to let everybody run, and Mayor Protem Lamont was our in-house photographer, and I know Councilmember Schaffner and Councilmember Rowe were also there. It was a good event. We also had a large number of volunteers that made it possible, so we thank those people as well, in addition to our staff. And probably what people care about most is that we should issue the building permit this week for breadwinners. We're waiting on one contractor registration, and once they get that, they should go vertical. So it's good news all around.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right, council will move on to item number two, Town Council Liaison Updates, Discussion of Saying, Park and Recreation Board, March 21st meeting, and the council liaison is Councilmember Schaffner. Philip?
Yeah, there was actually just two items that were discussed. One was, the staff presented a CAPRA accreditation process and received input from the board about going forward with that, and the board was receptive to moving forward with that accreditation. And then they discussed wristbands for certain activities on the Fourth of July celebration, not unlike the community pool. There's been a lot of complaints from residents about long lines for face painting, things of that nature, and so they are going to recommend that wristbands be given out free to citizens and that non-residents pay $10 fee to participate in those. Fireworks banned, things like that would still be free. It's just the things that cause long lines, like face painting, bounce houses, things of that nature.
All right, thank you.
I just had a thought. I did attend it. They kept talking about a family of four would have to buy four tickets, but do you think that the reality is only the children who want to participate would have to buy two wristbands? So it's really not four tickets. It would be two tickets.
Unless the adults wanted their face painted. You know, but other than that, yeah, just...
I think they missed that.
Yeah.
Greg, I'll buy you a wristband if you want yours painted.
There were those that think it's painted already, so.
We want it painted.
All right, any other questions?
I'm getting my face painted.
All right.
I could use the back of my head painted, I mean, it's impotent.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, I just want to point out before I ask about removal of items, I made the decision when we were posting the agenda to place a couple of proclamations in the consent agenda. They weren't going to be represented by anybody attending to receive those proclamations, and in the aspect of saving time, just thought we could approve them. So at this point, anybody want to remove any items three through 10 from the consent All right. So hearing no one seeking that, I then would read the items three through 10 and then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Item three, consider and take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated February 23rd, 2016. Item four, consider and take appropriate action regarding a request by the Trophy Club Women's Club for a temporary use permit, special privilege request to allow two community garage sales in calendar year 2016, and it is case TUP 16007. Item five, consider and take appropriate action regarding financial invariance report dated February 2016. Item six, consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance repealing Division Two, Meetings and Rules of Procedure of Article 1.03, Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances, adopting a new Division Two, Meetings and Rules of Procedure of Article 1.03, Town Council, and providing an effective date. Item number seven, consider and take appropriate action regarding calling a special council meeting to be held on March 29th, 2016 at 7:00 PM in this four municipal building boardroom located at 100 Municipal Drive, Trophy Club, Texas. Item eight, consider and take appropriate action regarding a letter of agreement between the town and Meet You Anywhere BBQ for use of the town logo, authorizing the mayor his designate to execute all necessary documents. Item nine, consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation proclaiming April 11th, 2016 as Parkinson's Disease Day in Trophy Club. Item 10, consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation proclaiming April 5th, 2016 as Mayor's Day of Recognition of National Service in the Town of Trophy Club to entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items three through 10.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. It is 7:16 PM, and we will convene into a public hearing. Item number 11 on our agenda, conduct a public hearing regarding a request to amend a conditional use permit for a wireless antenna facility located within Track C, Section Eight, Trophy Club addition along State Highway 114 between Trophy Club Drive and Trophy Club Drive south of Roaring Creek Court by expanding the total lease area from .006 acres to .016 acres. It's KCUP 16008. Holly, did anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mayor.
Anyone from the audience wishing to speak during the public hearing? Hearing no one wishing to speak, we will close the public hearing at 7:17, and reconvene into regular session. Counsel, without objection, I am going to request that we move items 16 and 17 that deal with this particular aspect of the conditional use permit for the cell tower along with its lease up so that we can consider it, and the representative from Verizon then would not have to stay. Any objection to that?
None here.
All right. Then we'll go to item 16, consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance amending, ordinance number 2015-36PNZ approving a conditional use permit for a wireless antenna facility located within Track C, Section Eight, Trophy Club addition along State Highway 14 between Trophy Lake Drive and Trophy Club Drive south of Roaring Creek Court by expanding the total lease area from .06 acres to .016 acres. KCUP 1608. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, I'll call anyone wishing to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to amend ordinance number 2015-36PNZ approving a conditional use permit for a wireless antenna facility located within Track C, Section Eight, Trophy Club addition along SH 114 between Trophy Lake Drive and Trophy Club Drive south of Roaring Creek Court by expanding the total lease area from 0.006 acres to 0.016 acres.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mayor Protem Lamont moved, and Councilmember Rowe has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. So now we'll consider item 17, consider and take appropriate action regarding an amended lease agreement between the town and Verizon Wireless for a wireless antenna facility located along State Highway 114 between Trophy Lake Drive and Trophy Club Drive and authorizing the mayor his designate to execute all necessary documents. Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the lease agreement between the town and Verizon Wireless for a wireless antenna facility located along State Highway 114 between Trophy Lake Drive and Trophy Club Drive as presented at the dais.
Do you have a second?
I will second.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Lamont, seconded by Councilmember Rowe, to approve the lease agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Counsel will go back to the order in which we have our agenda. Takes us back to item number 12. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the acceptance of the audit for the Town of Trophy Club fiscal year 2015. We do have John DeBorrow, our auditor, with us this evening. If you'd like to come forward, sir, identify yourself and take us through any of the literature you gave us. While he's getting ready, just to let you know, the audit committee did meet last week, or was it this week?
It was Thursday.
It was Thursday of last week, or it was last week. They kind of run together after a while, and did have a more detailed view of the document that you have, and did have some discussion about, questions about the audit. All right, Mr. DeBorrow.
Yes, I'd like to thank you for letting me speak before you this evening. My name's John DeBorrow, and I'm Senior Audit Manager, and as you mentioned, I met with the audit committee last week and went through the audit in a fair amount of detail. And I'd like to kind of give you a high-level overview of things tonight, beginning with the audit process. We are presenting the results of the fiscal year 2015 audit, and the audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted government auditing standards. We performed the audit using a risk-based approach in which we tried to identify areas that are susceptible to material misstatement and tailor our audit programs and resources accordingly to specifically address such risks as revenue and related receivables, capital assets, purchasing and bidding requirements, payables, and accrued liabilities. We came out during the fall, during October, and we performed interim procedures which dealt primarily with internal control work, walking through some of the town's internal controls over major transaction cycles such as payroll, cash disbursements, and receipts. We tested internal controls over cash disbursements and payroll, and performed tests of the town's compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act and bidding procedures. When we came back in January, once the books were closed, we performed various types of testing of the town balances using a combination of techniques such as vouching material transactions, sampling other balances, and performing analytical procedures. We have required communications that we have to have with those charged with governance. The primary communication is that we have to inform you of our responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standards, and those responsibilities are to express an opinion on the town's financial statements based on our audit. And we've completed our audit, and we've issued what's called an unmodified opinion, which means that we feel that the town's financial statements for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2015 are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also have responsibilities under government auditing standards, and that is to issue a report on our consideration of the town's internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance. We've issued such a report, and there were no findings. This year, the town was required to implement some new accounting standards, namely GATB 68 and 71, which are affectionately known as the pension standards, and for the first time, the town, as well as all other governments, had to record a liability for pension benefits to be paid as a result of current services. The details of such implementation are in the notes to the financial statements, and again, we've gone over that in detail with the audit committee. There were no fraud irregularities or material misstatements discovered as a result of our audit. There were no difficulties in performing our engagement, no disagreements with management. There were no independence issues, and there were no significant journal entries that were posted as a result of our audit procedures. To summarize, we've issued our independent auditor's report, and issued an unmodified opinion. We've issued our report on internal control and compliance, and there were no findings. It was a very good audit, and I'd like to, you know, take a moment to thank Stephen and the rest of his staff for all their cooperation and hard work in making this a very successful audit. Lastly, I've got a few financial highlight slides I'd like to share with you that have information that's derived directly from this year's and last year's financial statements. The first slide provides a comparison of the governmental funds expenditures by fund. Overall, this year, fiscal year 2015 governmental funds expenditures totaled $13 million, which was a $2.8 million increase over the previous year. Most of that increase, $2.6 million, related to construction of major capital projects. And this slide here provides a side-by-side comparison of the functional expenditures for the governmental funds, and you can see that capital outlay was the largest change between fiscal year 2014 and fiscal year 2015. The next slide provides a comparison of governmental funds revenues by source. Governmental funds revenues in fiscal year 2015 totaled $11 million, which was a .8 million increase over the previous year. Most of this increase is primarily attributable to the increase in ad valorem taxes. And again, this slide shows a side-by-side comparison. You can see that the ad valorem taxes increased from just under $6 million in fiscal year 2014 to approximately $6.7 this past year. The next slide provides information on the town's fund balances for the governmental funds. Overall, as of September 30th, 2015, the town's governmental funds reported a combined fund balance of $6.2 million, $3.7 million of which is in the general fund, the town's main operating fund. Overall, governmental funds decreased by 1.7, I'm sorry, $1.9 million, primarily the result of spending down bond proceeds issued in the previous year on capital projects. Overall, the general fund fund balance of $3.7 million represents 46 percent of fiscal year 2015 general fund expenditures, which is very strong. And overall, in the general fund, there is a budgetary comparison schedule that's provided in the CAFR, and the town had a favorable budgetary variance of $790,000. Actual revenues came in at $31,000 more than budgeted, while actual expenditures were below budget. And finally, in the proprietary funds, operating revenues and expenses, there's a side-by-side comparison on this slide. Overall, the proprietary fund's net position increased by $121,000 in fiscal year 2015, primarily due to a $175,000 increase in the storm drainage fund. Overall, operating revenues decreased $92,000 due to a $73,000 decrease in the Trophy Club Park revenues. And with that, I'd just like to, again, just thank Stephen, the rest of the finance staff. It was a very good audit.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions, Mr. DeBorrow? Stephen, any comments?
First, I'd like to thank John and his team. They're, they've been excellent to work with. You know, I've told the council before that I know how well an audit goes based on the amount of time that I have to talk to John, and this year it was really more just some formality things that we have to do and have to cover, but otherwise, it was a great, we went through a great process. Stephen and his staff of Amber and April and John also did a really great job making sure that they were prepared. This is really a six-month process that begins October 1st, and sometimes even before we've even closed the fiscal year, getting ready for the auditor, so I really appreciate the work that they do. They worked very hard on this. Getting a clean opinion, or an unmodified opinion, is something that you strive for. It's something that we've always had. Also, I'd like to note the fund balance position. It wasn't that long ago that we didn't have that kind of position, and that affords us the opportunities to do things and to do projects and without having to borrow money all the time, and that saves our residents money in the long term because you're not paying interest many times for vehicles or other things like that. So it's been something I'm very proud of. It also helps achieve a higher bond rating, which makes the ability to borrow money cheaper when you want to do capital projects. I'm very proud of our AA+ bond rating, especially for a city our size. It's unusual, but I just want to thank not only John's staff, but our staff for their hard work, and I appreciate the town council and your guidance and your fiduciary responsibility and the importance that you play upon, that you have for our financial stability and future outlooks. So thank you very much.
Counsel, any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to receive the audit report for fiscal year 2015.
I'll make a motion to accept the fiscal year 2015 audit report.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
So a motion to receive the audit report for fiscal year 2015, by Councilmember Rowe, seconded by Councilmember Perrow. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Before we move on, do want to point out that at your dais tonight is the fondly referred to CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, 100 pages or so of lots of data. Last year, when I remember it came out, there were a number of citizens that actually came up to me in casual situations and said how much they appreciated all the openness and the information. So Stephen, do we have copies of this available if people request it?
We do.
All right.
We printed 15 copies, so we have, we have a public viewing copy that'll be here in the lobby, and I have a couple of additional copies that if anybody actually wanted them...
And do we have this on electronic? Is it online?
It'll be posted online tomorrow.
All right. And what about the auditor's report? Will it be online?
The auditor's report is, a portion of that is within the report, and then the gas report, which is in the packet, is...
the gas report, which is in the packet, is not online or, or anywhere else. That's really for, you know, the, the council or, or management, but.
Somebody wants to see the auditor's report, they can come in and.
Well, well, yeah, the independent, well, the, their, their opinion report is actually in the CAFR, so.
Yes, okay, all right.
They can view that.
All right, good. All right, any questions, anybody else?
I just have a question of April. By any slim chance, is that Sherry in the middle of the, the pond?
All right.
Are you looking at the cover?
The cover.
I don't think so. I think Sherry's out bustling around doing her reports and that.
I'll have to bring that to her attention.
John, thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
Very much for the report.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, consider to take appropriate action regarding Trophy Club Drive at Marshall Creek for road improvements and bridge. Receive a presentation from T. Nolan Perkins and discussion of same. I see Tom Rutledge in the audience. Tom, you have the podium.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. I may need some help getting us over here and let's see.
Mike is coming up here, he'll help.
Well, I thought I felt him, I thought I felt him coming.
Down at the bottom, I think, maybe.
And this is the, let's see, is that the?
Yep.
Okay, and there's the pointer.
And if you use the mouse, you can point to things if you're trying to have us see a particular item.
I remembered that. Okay, well, good to be here tonight. I know this is another important project we need to talk about for you guys and so glad to be here tonight to do that. Kind of get right to this, if, Mike, if I haven't messed this up. Okay, there we go. Okay, so as everybody knows, we've got water that flows over the road at times when we get high storm events. Right now, when we're out there, the, the existing drainage structure that we have out there right now is a three-barrel, ten-by-eight box culvert. Try to put some things in perspective to kind of give you a little bit of a, of a background on some of this. There we go. Back in 2011, Freezing Nichols did a master drainage study for the town, which included this portion of Marshall Creek. And I know there's a lot of lines on here, we just pulled this right out of the study. So I'll try to do the best I can to kind of describe to you a little bit about what this represents, because I think some of you on council weren't here at the time that the study was, was approved and so I want to give you a little bit of background so things are contextual for you. Things are color-coded in here, so when you look at what is identified, they, they looked at the existing hundred-year floodplain and they looked at what is considered the FNI, which is the Freezing Nichols Proposed Floodplain. So they did this, did the study. So you take the blue, which is right in here, and this is what they show is the existing hundred-year and you can see how it kind of spreads. When they go in and, and based on the study, do some of the, the improvements, which included in the study, not only the bridge crossing, but upstream and downstream improvements, they were, that, this study includes doing about two-and-a-half to three feet of excavation of this entire area, plus downstream excavations, which is about a million dollars just for that dirt work, just that earthwork alone. That, that was done in part, you can see that there's these green stars and part of, part of what was going on that I understand at the time was to try to see what could be done to get some of these homes that are along here out of the hundred-year. So that was, that was a consideration for, for part of that. So we took the, we took the flows and, and the, and the queue that was, was provided and we looked at in the study of dropping a, a bridge structure in there to pass the, the hundred-year. One of the things that, when you look at what is out there now with a three-barrel box culvert, that will pass about fifteen-hundred CFS through those boxes without it going over the road. That's equivalent to somewhere, we, we tried to back those things in and based on what's there and it's about a two-to-three-year storm event, can go through those boxes. In a fully developed watershed, for everything that's upstream, we have in the hundred-year fifteen-thousand-four-hundred CFS that comes to that point. So fifteen-hundred versus fifteen-thousand, so that's, that's the amount of developed flow that comes there now. In an undeveloped, in our current conditions, it's somewhere around fourteen-thousand-four-hundred. So we're really, with everything that's developed up in Westlake right now with the residential homes, you don't have a whole lot of undeveloped flow. So what they did in the study is look at, try to look at a fully developed watershed, which is what you always want to do anyway. So we could look at what that would be. So when we looked at putting a bridge structure in there, it's about a four-hundred-and-fifty-foot span. The thing about this is, is because of the volume of water, the roadway needs to be raised approximately six feet from what it is now. So that kind of gives you a perspective of what we've got there to be able to pass the water under the, under the bridge. One of the things that we, that's also in the study that we looked at, you can, if you do, you can do a, a clean bridge structure or you could go put box culverts in there and you've got three, three eight-by-ten boxes. If you were just to stack box culverts by each other to pass the hundred-year, you would need eighteen twelve-by-ten boxes that are even bigger than that. So that, that'll give you a little bit more perspective of just how big of a structure we're talking about to pass the, the hundred-year. The other thing that we were asked to look at by staff was, well, what about if we just do a twenty-five-year storm and what would that look like? And so you would have eight twelve-by-ten boxes compared to the eighteen. You wouldn't, it wouldn't be practical to try to build a bridge structure here. When you get, when you're looking at that hundred-year design and you're, you're considering putting in eighteen boxes, you might as well put the bridge structure in with the piers and everything, because you're talking about a maybe two-hundred-thousand dollars difference between stacking a bunch of boxes in there versus building a bridge. A bridge is a lot more efficient in that high level of flow anyway versus the boxes, because you have a lot of losses coming through all those boxes.
So, so under both circumstances, would you have to raise the road six foot?
Correct. You still would raise the road irrespective of whether it was a twenty-five-year storm event that you're designing to or a hundred-year. And, and I'll get you, I'll get into the cost for you as well, because I know that's where all the decisions always get made, is what's this going to cost? The, the one thing is, is that when you look at this, if you do a twenty-five-year storm event, in a hundred-year, the water's going to go over the road and it's going to be about a foot and a half deep. So you still are going to look at storm events that were, in all practicality, a foot and a half deep, it's really still not passable for, at that depth to safely pass. Maybe you could get a fire truck in an emergency across there if you had to do that. We've got, you know, every bridge I can think of that we've done in recent years, we, we just finished up a bridge for Capel and I've got some pictures, I'm going to show you some sample bridges that we've done, just so you can see the type of bridges we're talking about here. If you're familiar with Keller, you know, we did two, we did the two bridges in roof snow at Keller, we did the Bear Creek Bridge there at Town Center at seven, when you come on Bear Creek through Town Center and then by the golf course at, uh, Sky Creek Ranch, that long bridge that crosses the golf course, we did that bridge. All the bridges that we've, we've done and all these major drainage structures, we just always design them for the hundred-year, just because you, that's usually, that's your standard, because you know that you're going to have events that in, in theory, that, that one percent chance that we're going to have hundred-year events. And so on a, on a, on a structure like this, because of how critical Trophy Club Drive is to you, we'd, we'd recommend that you strongly consider looking at the hundred-year bridge design for this. So when you look at the cost, then the cost comparison between the two on the, the.
Tom, can I, maybe, just for, I know some of our council understand this, but maybe for those who are in the audience or those who are watching on TV, why don't you explain what a twenty-five-year and a hundred-year event? That doesn't mean that's going to happen once every hundred years.
Yeah.
Why don't you explain kind of that concept?
Sure. This is a, this is a, a method by which engineers design drainage structures by, so when we talk about a hundred-year event, it's basically a one percent chance that you will have this amount of flow come through this particular area. So anytime you're looking at a hundred-year event, it's a one percent chance that you're going to get that. So it, it is theoretical, but it's also mathematical in the sense that we have very good data by which when we look at hydrograph curves and everybody always talks about, I know last year, there was some pretty significant rainfall, like back in Thanksgiving. I live in North Richmond Hills and so I've, I've got a rain gauge and I got ten inches of rain during that period of time and depending on where the watershed is where it hits, that, that will, will get measured whether or not that's a true one-hundred event, your event. I think you guys were probably close last year to having at least one or two of those. Yeah, last year was a, an anomaly, I think, for a lot of people. So there's not to say that you couldn't have more than one-hundred-year event in the same year, but that's how we measure those flows based on those hydrograph curves, which for a watershed like this, when they model it, you know, you're looking at somewhere at the rate of about nine-point-six inches per hour for about a fifteen-minute time period. So that's the kind of rainfall event that you're talking about. In a twenty-five-year event, so then you're talking about something that would happen a little more frequently and so the hi, the higher probabilities go up, obviously, even though the, the flow is reduced, because we're going to tend to get more of those type of events. Most of the time when we're getting these heavy rainfalls, we're getting somewhere around that two-to-five-year storm event is typical. And that's pretty normal for you guys, because Trophy Club Drive, even when it passes the fifteen-hundred CFS, it doesn't flood every time we get a real heavy rainfall. And so even in a two-year storm event, which is still considered fairly high rate of fall, doesn't flood that roadway. That's still pretty significant and we've all seen that. I've been, we've been working up here since nineteen ninety and I've seen that road top several times when it was not a hundred-year event. It was something in that neighborhood of a five-to-ten-year event.
Tom, would it be correct to presume that when you run your calculations to come up with this data, that you take into account upstream development that's on the books to be done and is in the process of being done, that would change the topography sufficiently to modify the flow rates downstream to where we are?
Well, and that's the thing about this study. Freezing Nichols did a good job with the study, which they did what they should have done. They looked at what the, the existing conditions are, which were done in 2011. So they looked at the, the developed watershed upstream of you and, and looked at that and that hundred-year flow is fourteen-thousand-four-hundred CFS in the existing conditions. They looked at the undeveloped watershed, which is estimated to be about seven percent and some of, of that is of higher density, some commercial retail-type development, which got, gets that up to fifteen-thousand-four-hundred. So it's about another a thousand CFS than what the existing conditions are. So it's about a seven percent increase. So it's not significant. So pretty much that the developed watershed is going to be pretty close to what the existing. So in this case, you would want to, you would want to design for what you anticipate a fully build-out condition would be. Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. So did, am I good there, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in that context, then, when we're looking at this, on a, a twenty-five-year storm event, if we do these eight-by-ten, or eight twelve-by-ten boxes, we're looking at about three-point-eight million dollars for that cost and that is the entire shaded portion here. So you have these box culverts with, with everything that you would have here with the boxes and then whatever grade transition we would do and then we'll go ahead and in either case, we're going to finish up the road and make the connection where we stopped with the roundabout. So we complete this roadway and as was asked there, that this would all, at the, at this point, we'd come up six feet and then we'd transition this grade back to, to connect it back into the existing roadway that's there. In the bridge design, that bridge cost is estimated to be five-point-one million. What makes this a little more expensive is that when we look at this, as we're estimating costs, is that we have to keep the roadway open during construction. We don't have the luxury because of your connectivity across town to be able to just shut this road down. So we've got to build it half at a time. So you can, you, we've all driven, if you've driven, and our, our office is downtown Fort Worth, so I kind of, kind of live around this when we're driving through the Metroplex downtown. As you're raising that, you're building that half of that bridge, six feet in the air, we got to keep half of that roadway at its existing level and the safety things we have there for, for ever, the traveling public while we build this half of a bridge. So we've got to build half the bridge at a time and that makes that cost higher. And so that's the challenge with that. A couple of things I just wanted to share with you then, as we kind of look at, at this, this is the Capel Bridge that we just finished up, which I would, I would see it similar to this. We, we would, we would look at some articulations similar to what we've done here with your bridge railing, the, the Veranda Avenue Bridge, if you recall, what's over there and what neighborhood is that in? I forgot.
Isle of Ternary.
Isle of Ternary, that's right. When we worked with that developer, we got with them to help them develop some articulations on that similar to this, because we wanted some treatments on both the face of the bridge and on the railing. And so we would have something similar to this and then the transitions that we did here would be pretty similar to what we would anticipate there. I mean, this, with what we're looking at with, with this type of a, a bridge through town, we know that this is just your, your main artery that brings you in there. So we, we'd want to do something similar to this, where we transition the landscaping in and then the hardscapes that we would do, we'd see do something similar to that along with, with the bridge railing articulations there. When we look at things like scheduling, as we've kind of talked with staff briefly about this, we'd be looking at a, a design time, from the time we start survey through design, somewhere around that, that seven-to-nine month period. One of the things, because we're, we're going to be there at Marshall Creek, we'll have to get a four-four permit through the Corps, but the amount of transition that we're going to try to do, because we're not looking to do all of this extensive excavation in the creek, we'd look to just do that under what they call a nationwide permit, permit, not an individual permit, which allows that process to go a lot quicker and it's less restrictive with the Corps. But that'd be one of those things. And so what, what we do when we have situations like this, crossing a creek, we get environmentalists involved, we'll identify where the wetlands are, because there, there are wetlands there and you, you delineate those, you got your reports you got to do, file that with the Corps and then you define what your disturbed wetland area is in there. And that can be done under, we think, under the nationwide permit. So with the design time and considering all of that, seven to nine months and then just because the way we've got to phase it, I would, I would look at something along the line of construction here, somewhere around eight to nine months of construction time. Answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a question.
Tim?
I don't know much about bridge construction, so can, if you were to close the bridge, not saying you are, how long would you have to close it for if you were going to do it all at once?
You, pretty much, I'd say, you know, if we're looking at a nine-month construction time, I mean, probably seven months.
You'd have to keep the entire bridge closed for seven months.
Because what you're going to do is you're going to come in here and what, what you're saying is, we're going to just barricade this off, barricade this off, we're going to demolish that. You know, still building that whole structure, you've still got piers, columns, you've got to construct and the bridge deck. So you might be able to, you know, to save maybe two months, three months, I really.
So obviously, if you. So obviously if you can't close it, is there a way that you can schedule it that most of the work is done in the summertime?
Well, that's, that's what we looked at and ideally that's what you'd want to do. And as we looked at that, this with staff, that's what we'd kind of said is, hey, let's, if we're, we start design on this and start survey and say next month and we get going on the design, try to have this bid and ready to, to let as soon as school's out. So we at least capture three of the, the dry months and the non-school months because of traffic. So that would be ideal to do it that way.
But this small, this small project is a nine month project.
Well, we're looking, the reason I'm looking at it that way and, and that's, you know, that's conservative. I'm not saying it could not be done in a shorter period of time because of the phasing of it. When you're raising that roadway elevation six feet and then, and having to build it, I talked to my structural engineer about this because we're, when we've designed some tech stop bridges, we've had to do the same thing. That Capel roadway bridge was a little easier because we were widening the roadway. It was a narrower road, two lane road, and we widened it to four. And so you can imagine, we got to slide it over.
Right.
And that made that easier, but we still built that in two sections.
Okay.
Yes, Garrett.
Can I ask Danny a question?
Sure.
Danny, in any, in any given calendar year, how much time do you think we spend where we have to have a crew on one side and a crew on the other side because the bridge is flooded?
How much time?
Yeah, how much time?
We had two events last year.
And-
It just depends on the rainfall. I mean, one time the water went over the road and the other time it didn't, but we had crews on both sides.
But we were stationed there, so.
Yes, yes.
10 hours a year, maybe?
I would say it may be more than that because even, was that two weeks ago where we anticipated the big rain coming in? We, we send personnel and we have barricades if you, if you ever noticed, but everything staged. So, I mean, is that, is that 10 hours? No, but it's a few hours every time, especially when we started looking at the radar and what the forecast is. We start preparing for those types of events.
And these events are watching several locations too, other than the bridge. So we've got people scattered all over both sides of the, of the community, so.
Okay, so that, that actual event happens a couple of, maybe that happens 10 times a year where we actually have to watch, if you will? Okay, I was just curious. And is there overtime involved in that? Do we, or is it just the crews that are on hand, handle it?
Well, it depends on what happens. We will be prepared and have folks on call and so that if an event like Thanksgiving night, we did have everybody come in because you had issues all over town where you're, you're trying to monitor certain spots and have people stationed in particular locations. We have, you know, there are certain properties we know flood. And so we ensure that we send personnel by to monitor those places and those residents to ensure that they're safe. This is just one of those major locations that really cuts the town in half.
So what's the financial impact of the bridge being as low as it is today? If you were just to guess, is it 10 grand a year? We spend extra money to kind of get people out there and get prepared? I'm not asking for specifics. I know you never want to answer me with the vague.
I would say just a couple of thousand because, you know, they're, they're already working, so.
Yeah, it's usually the, the street crew or the rec crew or whatever that they get, have to be extra manpower to move the barricades and stuff like that. But emergency services, we usually handle with the crews or mutual aid or whatever for.
And then, you know, we, we have, do have CERT that we can call out. You know, you know, a lot of, I mean, Pat comes out, Pat's salaried. So that's not, you know, things like that. When Ed comes out, Pat comes out, I come out. That's not, we're not costing overtime. It's just, you know, that's just inherent, built in cost.
All right, so I have, I think, four hands. Garrett, you through?
I'm through, thank you.
All right, so Tim, I think you-
No, no.
No, no, okay. Then Philip, did you have?
Thanks, Danny.
Yeah, along those same lines that Garrett's talking about and Danny sat down. But you have to stage, you're basically in a situation like that, you have to stage emergency personnel on both sides, correct?
Yes, when the, when the creek is flooded and there's water running over the roadway, we, we, we stage on both sides of the road.
Because you can't attempt to go across.
We, yes.
Right, okay.
Now, we have, you know, we don't want a truck washed off the road or get a vehicle to follow us or whatever.
So that's, that's something to add to what you said. I, I know-
Same thing for Arada, Chief Arada and his, his staff were doing the same thing.
I, I know that when, and I know Tom wasn't involved in the Fresh Meadow project or the Skyline project. I would assume that, I'm, I'm almost 100% sure that both of those were designed for a hundred year. And I assume that Indian Creek that you did do was designed for a hundred year if you could have put the-
We did. In fact, if, I don't know, for those of you that recall, as we presented on Indian Creek, using the, the study, we designed that bridge structure, if you want to call it, those boxes. We designed it for the hundred year. But in that study, that study really has all of that, that creek section being significantly improved. So because we're spending all that money to build the roadway improvements and we built the box structures for a hundred year, we actually closed one of the barrels.
Right.
Because we, because of the cost, if you recall, of the issues of condemning for the easement and everything. So we closed one of the barrels and everything is set up. So whenever you guys in the future, if you ever decide to make those creek improvements, that's all set up and we can widen the creek and you're ready to go.
Right, so, so basically everything that we've, we've done in the last five years, six years has all been designed for a hundred, a hundred year flood. And I think that we do, I think we do ourselves a disservice by not designing this for a hundred year because this connects, if you really want to say, this connects both sides of town. And without that, emergency personnel has to go down 114 to try to get across things like that. So I, I just think that that's sort of been our operation is to design everything at a hundred year flood. And, and I will say that not long after we finished Fresh Meadow, there was a 50 year event that worked great. You know, everything operated like it was supposed to do, so.
All right, Ryland, and then Greg, and then Tim.
Yeah, so what I'd like to see, whatever option that we end up going with here, obviously our throughput under the bridge is going to change and it's going to increase dramatically. So I'd like to see what the projected impact on the hundred year flood plane in that immediate area is. Obviously, it's not going to match what you had on your first slide, but it's, but it's obviously going to change somewhat. So I think it would be educational for us and for residents who are close to the project to see if that changes at all and how that, how that changes. So Stephen, if you guys want to just, I think that's something we should prioritize putting together.
So what we can do, if I want to make sure I interpret correctly, so we do this way you want, asking us to do that, what I'm hearing you say is, well, let's drop, let's, we can both, because we have the models, everything's modeled these days, so we have all the computer models. We can drop the hundred year, or we can drop the bridge structure in there for the hundred year and whatever grading improvements we're going to make in the creek and, and see what that, how that reacts. And then we can drop the 25 year event in there with those boxes on the next slide and see what that looks like and, and then see what the, what the hundred year flood plane is doing in that 25 year event. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
Yeah, I think that would be a valuable piece of information for us to have. But just make sure if you model it based on this, that we're not counting on some of the excavation you described and properties north and south.
That's right.
Because obviously it's private property, it's a one in a million shot we'd be able to do-
That's right.
Major changes there, so.
I hear you, okay.
All right, so Greg, and then Tim.
What part of this project, is there a part where there's need to repair irrespective of whether we raise the bridge or not? And the reason I ask is because if the Corps all of a sudden had a sudden change of heart and they let us go through the loop road, will we still have to raise the bridge six feet? It's hypothetical, I get it, but.
Well, raising the bridge six feet is because you're building a new structure. And so it's the criteria by which we're designing against. I mean, the bridge, the roadway can stay where it is. If you, if everybody said, well, we're okay, you know, that the water does what it does. I mean, I, I did, one thing I didn't, I didn't mention was is that in, in this, in a true hundred year event, and I don't know if we've, I, I know we've had a hundred year event, but in the models, it's showing that the water's going over this roadway section five and a half feet. I don't know if we've seen that, that much here, but you've got that kind of watershed, so.
That Mother's Day one was probably pretty close. If you think about how high up it was on Meadow Creek Court.
And, and in a 10 year event, and this is where things, because everything's on a curve and so you'd think, well, you know, it'd be a whole lot less. In a 10 year event, it's going over the roadway in four and a half feet, over the existing structure. So that'll give you, that's a 10% chance that, that you're going to have, have that flooding over the roadway. But certainly if you had the loop road, then, you know, we might be talking about a, a different situation. But, you know, Philip's right, every, everything we've ever designed for you guys and even the stuff that we set up for your drainage standards for the Highlands, we always made them address the hundred year. That's just the design standard that every municipality goes by. What's the hundred year doing? Making sure that there is no life safety at risk when it comes to the hundred year event. And if we've done that, then we feel like we've protected the public.
Tim?
I'm just going to play devil's advocate here because I, I drive down to Dallas when there's flooding on Route 12 and everything else and it's flooded all the time. So we're building a, a police station up by the front of town. And I have to believe that there's something going on in Turnberry, is my neighborhood. They're going to shoot down 114 to Trophy Lake Drive. They're not going to come down 30, I mean, down Trophy Club Drive. I would imagine they're going to use the major road, roadway. I really don't understand why the fire department can't turn right, turn right again and shoot down 114 and then come down Trophy Lake Drive. I'm not saying we shouldn't do this, but to say that this is the only way to town, to this side of town makes zero sense to me. I think we have major roads that can get us there. So I'm, I'm trying to understand, is this something that definitely needs to be done? And if it does, that's fine. I mean, that's what we need to do. But we're talking about nine months and $5 million. When we may be able to use 114, I, I guess, I just want to throw that out there that it's, it's a lot of money. And if, if it's just for a couple of times a year, I mean, I drive down, I'm sure everybody here drives down into Dallas and when there's major floods, they're shutting down part of the roads and people have to go around it. I'm not saying that's what we should do, but I think we should look hard. And I just don't want to use the thing that, oh, Trophy Club Drive is the only way to get down there. Everybody drives down 114, we, we have an access road. And when the police station is up at the front, I would believe that they're going to use that access road or 114 a lot more than they will coming down if there's an emergency. I understand when they're in the neighborhoods. So that's all, I just wanted to play devil's advocate there and use, and say that.
The, the feedback I would say to that is, you know, most, our officers are off patrolling in various areas, so they're not always at the police station. But then the second part is, is if there's an accident on 114, if there's traffic backup, if something has happened, now you can't access, you can't go, that's not an arterial road. And so now you are having to try to get to another part of town. And I think Greg, I think Mayor Pro Tim Lamont brought up a good point. If that, if there was an alternative road to the other part of town, you know, I, I would maybe feel a little differently. But it literally is the one connection.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've never seen the side road be blocked, never, ever, the arterial road. I mean, there's been an accident at Trophy Club and Lake Drive, but it's never been blocked. I'm not saying not to do it, I'm just saying that I imagine that when there is an emergency and people at the police station are flying down, they're going to come down that road. That's my guess, so.
Philip, then Garrett, then myself, then Greg.
The only other thing that I might add to this is I, I don't, Westlake is far from done, you know? I, I think that, that eventually all of that pasture area, they're going to be dumping a ton of water, probably more so than what we're actually projecting, you know? The, so I, I think that over time, you're going to get a lot more of these events that happen and you're going to get a lot more water just from, from runoff that can't be absorbed into the ground.
Well, if you look at the bridge structure that they just built for 114, they've anticipated that. That, that's, when you, you look at that structure upstream of us, you look at what we've got downstream and you can see the disparity and what's there.
Garrett, then myself, and then Greg.
If Tim's going to get to play devil's advocate, I wanted to join in. This meeting seems way too serious for me. So it's a $5 million project. I agree with Philip that if we're going to redo this section of road, it needs to be the hundred year. I, I, I think you're going to find, very few of us disagree with that. But to play devil's advocate, which Tim did so adequately well, and I'm sure Mayor Pro Tim, you're going to play devil's advocate. For $5 million bucks, my guess is we could build a police and fire substation, staff it with fire trucks and police cars for less than $5 million on the other side of the bridge. Just playing devil's advocate. I believe if we're going to redo it, we, we do it. But I'd like to see what happens in Westlake. Let's see if we can limp along for a few years and see how that gets developed. Stephen, what'd you say, there was going to be more development over there than Addison the other day?
They've got 25 million of entitled commercial square feet.
Right, so, you know, and, and, I mean, all of us have been here for a long time. I mean, I moved to Trophy Club in 1992, it was a cow pasture, it hasn't changed that much. But at the same time, you've heard rumors of a Great, um, a Great Vine Mills Mall type mall there. Then you hear rumors of another golf course being built there. So what ultimately goes there could, like Philip said, make a great difference in. Is it 7%, is it 10%? We really don't know. Be great if it was a golf course, it'd be horrible if it was a mall, so. It's, it's such a big expense and we've got other infrastructure issues we got to deal with if it's not immediate and it might be that way, I'm not sure.
I couldn't tell you.
One, one thing we are doing is we're, we're working on a grant application to TD, TEDM, which is Texas Emergency Management. And, you know, it's a 75, 25, I think, cost. And so that is something that we're going to pursue because obviously that would be great. Because if you could get it fixed for basically a million bucks, you do it all day long. That, that, we wouldn't know that until much later. But it's something that, if we want to pursue that, you have to have the, kind of the plans ready. And so that's kind of the direction of what do we want to do at this point?
Yeah, and, and who knows if Denton County's willing to pitch in.
Right, exactly.
If we move forward, I'm, I'm in favor of the hundred year. I think Philip's correct. 25 years just, it doesn't make any sense. We've built everything else for that, we do that. But at the end of the day, it's a lot of money to spend on one project for a town this size.
I agree that if we design it, we should design it the hundred year. However, I do come down on the side of the devil's advocate, so to speak. My memory of when we do have those rain events that cover the bridge, within an hour or so, it's gone. We're now below the bridge, at least that's my memory. And, and I guess what I'm looking for is accurate statistics on what's happening. Are we keeping those records? How long is it flooded? How much is it flooded throughout North Terrance, Southern Denton? There are a lot of roads that get closed when we have a big rain event and then they open back up. Having said that, in the issue of Westlake, it is, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they have to detain or retain water to not give us more flow than we have today.
I don't know that they have to. I don't know that I can say that. Way back in the early 90s, when Gary Teague, the president of our company, was involved here in Trophy Club and of course Gary's since passed away. But when you guys were dealing with, as more on the level of Public Works Director when Bill Legram was here, we, we encouraged the town at the time when Mayor Carter was mayor and had a letter written to Westlake back then, I'll have a copy of it because we didn't write the letter, we helped the town write the letter, to request that they do not increase the flows downstream because of the impact. Those are things that happen like with, with Keller and Southlake and those surrounding cities where they have inter-local cooperation about downstream impacts. But their ordinances are not necessarily your ordinances. And so you get into some jurisdictional things when you deal with these waters of the US and what's happening. Now, you can get into things about, you know, obviously you've got to receive their water. Do you have to receive it in an increased rate? I mean, there, you don't have to be damaged by that. But I don't know that we could stand here and say, well, Westlake cannot release an increased rate on you. That's why the study looked at the existing conditions and- conditions and then anticipated developed conditions where the flows are increased. So.
All right. Well.
And, and just for, one of the things that we did around 2012 or 13, we went to Westlake and Hillwood and tried to talk to them about creating some modeling and kind of a plan, and then trying to seek grant funding to go ahead and start trying to plan for that. We had one meeting, and at that point, Hillwood, I, I think Hillwood did it as a favor. And at that, they, they were no longer interested in pursuing it, because we had Terrence County represented, because there is some unincorporated property along 377 that falls in this watershed. So, we had the three cities plus Hillwood, and that, you know, they, they are a 500-pound gorilla. And so, I have talked to the town manager of Westlake and expressed my concerns about future development over there, and where is that water going? And Turner Lake is a very shallow lake. That's one of the big issues, is that you can pretty much walk across it. It's so shallow. And so, it doesn't take much for the runoff to hit that. And there's no way to impound or, or, or keep that water detained for any amount of time before it starts coming towards us. And so they're, you know, I think that's something, that's a good conversation for us to have with Westlake, and try to work on some partnerships there, and some, maybe some agreements. But the water is going to come north, because that's where it flows.
We can't divert it to Lake Lamont over there.
All right. So I have Greg, and then Jim.
Playing devil's advocate. Danny, clarification. Did you say when there's a severe weather incident coming, you take a piece of equipment and bring it on the other side of the bridge?
We kinda watch the weather, yes. If it, if it looks like the water's gonna raise above the street level, we take apparatus and put it on the side of the.
So, basically, if there's a fire in Turnberry, you've got one piece of equipment going right there, and then a second piece would get on 114 and come around.
It also gives us medical equipment on that side, because of our injuries or medical.
Well, we have two ambulances, okay?
Well, we keep one on one side, and we keep, we only have five people, so we keep one ambulance on one side, a fire truck on the other side.
It'd be cheaper to hire somebody than pay $5 million.
I like that.
All right. Jim, then Ryland.
I was just following up on Tim's point, just for my own clarification. Danny, have you ever done a comparison between the, the actual time it takes to go from firehouse going down 114 to the roundabout versus going down Trophy Club Drive to the roundabout? In the event that road was covered, what the time differential is between the two response times?
Not as far as weather goes, but we have response times on, on point A to point B in, in the pit area, going down 114 and going surface streets, or whatever like that.
But you've never done it?
Not just for water.
Time response, to see the difference.
We've done timed response for just basic calls, fire and EMS calls.
All right, Ryland.
Okay. I am, I think I've told you all this before, that roads are one of the things that I have the most tolerance for spending money for. And it's rare that I have tolerance at all for spending money, but roads are up there on the list, probably number two, behind public safety. Everything that's been discussed up to this point is very valid and worth considering when you figure out when enough to do this. I keep coming back to two things. One being the cost of construction. And if, if we wait, there's gonna come a time when the market is going to foresee the cost of construction going so high, so fast, that stuff's gonna get built before everything gets so expensive and money gets more expensive and everything else. I mean, we're kind of in a situation right now where we're almost in a runaway growth scenario, because money is so cheap. So, when we talk about waiting for Westlake, I'm afraid to wait for Westlake too long, because I'm gonna have a, everything's gonna be so expensive, I'm gonna have a $30 million bridge to build, instead of a $5 million bridge to build. The other thing I keep coming back to is, so that makes me wanna start sooner rather than later. The other thing I keep coming back to is, the way a road system is designed to work, and in my, in my field, in my field of work, I, I help design systems that get data from point A to point B. It's not, it's not cars, but it's kinda the same thing. You design for redundancy, you design for, for high availability, things of that nature. And one of the various methodologies you could use is an N plus one model that says, if you need two, build three. If you need three, build four. If you need one, build two. And so, that's why Tim's point was really good. We have two. So, I'm being pulled in two directions, but I, I really think sooner rather than later is the right thing to do here, because if our forefathers had pulled the trigger on the loop road, how long ago were we in high school, Stephen? 17 years ago? If, if the trigger had been pulled then, we would have our N plus one, and we'd had it for a million bucks, or a million and a half, and it would've been done. And now we can't even get permission from the federal government to do that, because we might disturb a frog. So, act now. We are in a watershed here, that if we're not careful, and if you watch the news, I don't think we're going into a smaller government attitude anytime soon. Somebody's gonna tell us we can't build a bridge here, because a frog lives there. So, I'm moved to act.
All right. I, I think at this point, this was one of the items that we're considering in our capital improvement project, right, Stephen? So, we needed some information in order to be able to look at this. I think I said, as we've been doing some planning in the past, I'd really like to know more about what's the total cost of road construction, and, and maybe consider a bond election to, to handle all of it, as opposed to trying to squeeze it in. We are gonna find ourselves in three years from now where we're not having necessarily incremental tax increase in property values. So, how do we service that debt is the issue of a $5 million bridge that may or may not be needed, but 2% of the time. So, I'm sorry. All right. Tom, thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll bring this up to kinda have more discussion where it falls in the plans and how we move forward.
All right. You guys have a good evening.
Thanks, Tom. All right. Counsel, any other questions before I move us to 14? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to item 14. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a preliminary plat for Trophy Club Town Center addition containing 26.4 acres located within the PD 30 zoning district between State Highway 114, Trophy Club Drive, and Indian Creek, case PP 15-029. Ron, any comments that you have tonight?
Very briefly, Mayor, this is the preliminary plat, which is a part of a two-phase process for plats middle. Obviously, this will be the first, the final plat being the second. The, the main difference between a preliminary plat and a final plat is the preliminary plat does not get filed as a legal instrument, the county clerk. This is strictly, the purpose of this is to see the layout of the development, to look at phasing, to ensure, at least initially, that the development lot layout will meet the requirements of the development regulations themselves, in this case, the PD 30 zoning, as well as the town subdivision ordinance. So with that, the applicant is looking to develop this property, which is mostly vacant. There is a, an existing office building at the corner of Indian Creek Drive and Trophy Club Drive, which is shown on the plat as an existing, again, structure. The, that will be demolished to make way for future development of the property. So in terms of the planning and zoning recommendation, they heard the case on March the 10th. It was approved with five conditions, and I'll read through those briefly. One, that the town home lots be redesigned to conform to the PD 30 lot width requirements, that the property lines come off the road and not the center line of the street, that the common areas in the circulation zone be individually identified with common area lots. Four, that the meets and bounds property description conform to the PD 30 zoning description. And finally, five, that all building lots be located outside of the floodplain. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat. It does satisfy the requirements of the PD 30 regulations, and the town code of ordinances. And I'll be glad to answer any questions from the council.
All right. Thank you, Ron. We do have P&amp;Z Chairman Dennis Sheridan here. Dennis, any comments?
No, sir.
All right. As a point of clarification, Ron and Stephen, in our motion to approve, assuming we have a motion to approve what's submitted, do we need to specifically name that the five conditions are included in our approval? Or is that assumed if we just approve?
I would probably say with the conditions as outlined by the planning and zoning, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Anybody else have a?
I would concur with that.
All right. And Patricia?
Yes, it's a preliminary plat, so that's perfectly acceptable.
Perfect to do that. And so I do know we have a representative here tonight representing Beck's and their development. You've had a chance to see those five limitations or conditions. Were those items you willing to deal with? Would you come to the microphone, please, and identify yourself and who you're with, and answer that question?
My name is Joshua Millsap with Beery, 5310 Harvest Hill. Here I'm representative for JSB Properties Beck. We did make address on the first four. The final comment regarding the removal of the building line out of the floodplain, that impacted two or three of the town home lots. They do have the ability, with current locations, if the town home developer later date so chooses to make modifications to the actual floodplain limits, based off existing conditions, that they could do that, and that would be out of the floodplain. But we'd like to let the future developer of the, of the town homes handle that at a later date.
And we wouldn't allow building permits if it was in the floodplain, right?
Correct.
The building itself has to be out of the floodplain. Lots necessarily don't, are not required to be in the floodplain.
Not really part of the plat, or say, we're not really plating for those homes.
Currently, the, the lot line does overlap into what FEMA shows as the floodplain, but the building itself would be completely out of the floodplain.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yes.
Garrett?
I was gonna make a comment. I was, Dennis, you might be wanting to make this comment. I was actually at P&amp;Z that night, and I think that the P&amp;Z board was concerned about the residents, future residents, and the insurance ramifications that they might be imposed with. So, Dennis, you could probably elaborate on that.
Thank you, Dennis Sheridan, one Hill Crest Court, Trophy Club. The, you can get a building permit if part of the property is in the floodplain, but not where the house is, the structure. And there is a code that says what the finished floor elevation means, meaning you have to build your slab up higher to a particular point. Where we were coming from is, insurance, mortgage companies have the ability, and typically will, require that homeowner whose any part of the property is on, is in the floodplain, to carry flood insurance. Now, where it may be prudent normally to do so, to be forced to do it is what I'm trying to avoid. And I have built town homes before and also developed property that way. And it is incumbent to get in, to our future residents not to put that burden on them. Did I state that properly? All right. I'm open to any questions. Thank you, Dennis. Ryland?
I have a question. It could be for Dennis or for Stephen. To either of y'all's memory, have we approved any, any plats in recent years where a portion of the lot would, would be in the floodplain? Like, I'm thinking maybe Waters Edge, or maybe way in the back. I'm wondering what our precedent.
Yeah. But now, see, that, in Hogan's Glen is a prime example, okay? That one lot, that one lot that was in the floodplain, and the, they brought it out. And they had to do a clomer and a lomer to do it. I'm not an engineer nor a lawyer. In order for the, if my motive is the mortgage company and flood insurance, it either has to have a clomer and brought out with a letter of.
Map revision.
A map revision, or the surveyor who does the plat, because the builder did some minor elevation, I'm not getting into the core and all that good stuff. But if the builder will raise the back of those lots, and the surveyor who does the final plat certifies that's out of the floodplain, that's all the mortgage company cares for. Thank you, Dennis.
So we would.
Is that it?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. So based on what Dennis said, the, the plat could, these lots could remain platted as is right now, and we could still solve that in, at the development stage.
True.
Okay.
Right. And more than likely, I don't wanna speak for the developer, but more than likely, they would do a clomer and a lomer in order to facilitate the construction of those.
It's in everybody's best interest not to have an adverse condition on the property.
Right. That's correct. But also, the PD does have the creek area as left natural. It's, it's in that, so they don't have to, unless specifically required to, they don't have to touch it. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you. All right. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat for PD 30, case PP 15029.
So I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Plan Development 30, including the five recommendations that were given to us by the, four, so we just four?
Five.
No, I'd say we just put the five, the five recommendations that the Planning and Zoning Commission gave us.
I'll second it.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Reed, Reed is second, by Councilmember Perro, to approve the preliminary plat, indicating that you're including the recommendations of P&amp;Z items one through five.
Correct.
Any other discussion about that?
I would just say on, as far as the number five, if we've, if we've in recent history approved plats with lots in the floodplain that were later built up, I don't know why we wouldn't follow and do the same here. Is that your understanding of, of how it was handled?
We, I mean, when we look at it, we know, we know where it is. And so, at that point, we look at exactly what they want to do. And, you know, I'll, I'll give an example from the Commons. You know, they wanted to put a parking lot originally there, and we said no, because basically, four inches or so of water can take a car. And we said, you know, is it likely? Probably not. But, we're not going to do it. The only way you could do that is if you do a clomer, lomer, and you would build the lot up. Some, same thing that happened with Tom Thumb years and years ago. Tom Thumb was actually in the floodplain, and they raised that entire pad up. Beck, Beck Park, or what we call Beck Park, is in the floodplain. It would, in order for it, they would have to raise up that property. So it's not uncommon that that happens. You know, we're, we're very sensitive to those properties that have partial floodplain impacts, and so we try to mitigate that as much as possible.
All right. Any other questions, counsel, or comments?
I mean, I, I don't mind amending the motion to remove the fifth item, if anybody else has any comment. If it doesn't matter either way, I was just going with what P&amp;Z had recommended.
I, I'm okay with including it personally, but I don't know how anybody else feels. All right. We'll call for the vote. All those approving the motion to approve the preliminary plat for PD 30, case PP 15029, with P&amp;Z's recommendations, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Councilmember Lamont votes against, everyone else for. Stephen, I'll just make a, a comment. I didn't wanna have it affect this approval, but we have three residents that live in Hogan's Glen, all of which their homes were built outside of the floodplain. FEMA just a few years ago redrew the floodplain. Three homes ended up inside the floodplain. So, I'm not quite sure how it changed, other than somewhere their calculation, their survey, something surely changed, how they drew that line. And all three of those people had to get flood insurance that was forced by their mortgage company. So, I, I just think if we're gonna ultimately get into that construction environment, we need to be careful that we don't cause ourselves a problem later, that they're six inches out, that's not enough. They are out, but I'm concerned about that creek. And as that creek gets more water, which is evidenced by what's gonna happen to us, I think that's a critical issue. All right. Thank you, sir, for coming tonight. Item 15. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a request to install an electronic message board within an existing monument sign located at 101 Trophy Club Drive, Fellowship United Methodist Church being located in the NS Neighborhood Services Zoning District, case ME 16002. case ME 16002. Legacy Signs of Texas, I believe, is the person representing. Is there someone from Legacy here tonight? All right, sir. You do have a staff report, you'd have examples of the sign. Ron, do you have any statements from P&amp;Z's perspective and yours?
No, sir, the P&amp;Z approved it as requested.
Dennis, any comments? Please come to the microphone.
Dennis Sheridan, One Hill Crest Court. The P&amp;Z was divided. We did not approve this unanimously. There was significant concern over digital signage, about the flashing, about the safety of disturbing or disrupting traffic, and also the lighting that possibly would affect our residents at night and evening. And it was discussed that the applicant does lower the brightness after a certain amount of time. I voted for it. We already have it in town. The town itself has it. I'm not excited about it. We already have town ordinances that prevents, or should prevent, I'll say this, outside advertising on the sign itself, so it should be onsite only. But I did want to say that there was a significant difference in the opinion of P&amp;Z. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Legacy, do you wish to make any comments?
I had two comment questions. One is because I read in the staff report that the intended change rate of the lighted board would be at eight-second intervals. Is that adjustable?
Jeff, right, Legacy Signs, Fort Worth, representing Fellowship United Methodist Church. That's, that's an average, average time usually with the full-color displays, changeable electronic displays. That can be changed to any length of time as a standard, you know, any standard you would like to set that to. It can be the software, you can do it any, any length of time you'd like to change a message. It can stay on for half a second to five minutes or however long.
Can I add something to that? That was actually brought up in P&amp;Z, and Dennis may, can speak to this better, but you can actually add that provision to your motion, so.
And, and I also ask the town what was our interval on our signs, which is five seconds. So just as a point of gauge on that. The other thing is, does the sign that you're looking at buying or installing have a way that it automatically adjusts its brightness based on ambient brightness?
It does. This, this particular, this particular software in this unit, the average nits, which that's a way of measuring brightness in a light emitting diode, that's what a nit is, that's what a nit represents, the brightness. It, during the daytime, it has to be brighter, of course, because it's, it's fighting against the regular natural sunlight, and at nighttime, it reduces anywhere from 60 to 70% brightness, because it doesn't have to be near as bright. Now, if you notice, there are some signs out there around, around the metroplex that when you go by there, you can't hardly, it's so bright, you can't even read the copy on it because it's so bright. Well, this one does it automatically. As it, as it gets darker, it dims itself. That way, the, the copy and what you're reading is better legible, you can read it better. So it does that automatically as it, as it gets darker. It's built into the software.
All right, thank you. Those were my questions. Counsel, anybody else? Yes, I'm sorry.
Just for clarification, I know people are concerned that we approved this, there'll be a bunch of others, but each one would have to be approved, correct?
That's correct.
I'll just say, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I looked at, if you look at the Beck sign that's electronic, and then you go to Byron Nelson sign that's on Bobcat with different color lettering, they're all hand-entered, and sometimes they can be missing. I think it's, to me, it's just a much better improvement in night and day look.
Tim?
Yes, I was just gonna ask, so, so if, if they're allowed to have the sign, for the same reason, anybody can come up and ask for that same kind of sign, and we can have those signs all across town?
You could.
So right across from Medlin, where there's chiropractors, he can put something up, and then the church can put something up. And so right now, our, our ordinance says no advertising, but I guess the church can advertise whatever they want. They're gonna advertise everything, because it's not considered advertising, because it's not really selling anything.
Yep, I think the definition of advertising can be interpreted many different ways.
Right, so they're gonna be able to put whatever they want, and, okay.
I think from my perspective, Tim, is, I think we've kind of ignored that a little bit for the schools. They seem to advertise for other businesses, not just themselves.
Right.
And I see that as true advertising, whereas the promotion of one's own function
Right, so that's what I'm asking, the promotion of.
I see the church, the promotion of their event is not necessarily true advertising, but.
Right, so if, if the chiropractor goes and says, you know, first time free this weekend, that would be considered advertising, or is he just promoting his own, I mean?
If he had a sign, I would look at it the same way. He's promoting himself, not someone else. Unlike the schools are not promoting that school is out at a certain hour.
Yeah, I get it.
Or that we have a PTA meeting tonight, it's, they're selling that for profit. All right, Ryland, Garrett?
I'm, I'm not a fan of electronic signs. I know the town has three of them, and I wish we didn't have the three we have. Stephen, anytime you want to bring something up here to ask us to make a decision on the signs that we own, I'm, I'm gonna say, I don't like electronic signs. However, I'm not here to impose what I like and don't like on private property. There needs to be a greater public, a greater public impact, a significant public impact before it should be anything that our opinion should even matter. And, and we do, we do prohibit advertising, as Tim pointed out, but that leads me to question, why? Why are we standing in the way of commerce? I'm pretty sure that fine print on that thing up there says something about being business-friendly. So getting back to the, the task at hand here, the, the schools do have it. Really, this decision, if, if anyone's concerned about the precedent it might set, this decision is going to apply to other NS Neighborhood Services zoning districts. A lot of our other areas that would have signage concerns are gonna be in PDs and have other specifics that are gonna be applied to them. So think about this relative to other NS, or governmental use, or other ones like that. For me, I, this is the level of regulation that I'm not interested in imposing on a private property owner. And on the, on the topic of brightness for safety, I don't know if they still do this, but years ago, every race weekend, Roanoke PD would put these giant spotlights at the main intersections. I don't go that way that much anymore, because I'm living on the far east side of town now, but if you were approaching one of those lights, it blacked out everything behind it, and the police put them out there for safety. So I'm not so sure that a bright sign is a safety hazard any more or less than those were. Obviously, if the police think it's something that makes things safer, this is a point that can be debated, so I'm not really considering that in my decision. For me, this is mainly a regulatory thing, and I would basically favor the sign based on P&amp;Z's recommendation.
Garrett, and then Jim.
So let me try to change Ryland's mind.
That's impossible.
Because we, we agree so often. Commissioner Barron made some good points at P&amp;Z the other night, and I'm not gonna go into elaboration of them, there were more safety issues, but he did start to touch on what impact this would have on our community as a whole. And so I've given this some thought, and, and everybody knows that Ryland and I are usually lockstep on things. Individual business or citizens' private property rights are first and foremost. I've said it a million times, you want to cut down a tree, I'm not gonna charge you for it. If you want to kill a frog, kill the frog. It's your land, do what you want to do on it, right? I'm not a liberal. But having said that, I think that because human beings have chose to live in close quarters together and demanded that we put together government bodies like this to help regulate what goes on, I think we do have a responsibility to make sure that what someone does on their private property doesn't impact somebody else. So let me, let me let you know where I'm going with this. This, this particular location, I don't think would necessarily, other than what Commissioner Barron said, and sort of safety and creating a precedent going forward, I don't think this particular location would do much. But if you guys look at a map of Trophy Club, and you start to look where the other churches are in town, right? So now you're gonna go down to Indian Creek, and you're gonna allow that, if you're gonna allow one church, you're gonna allow that church. Now you're gonna allow the LDS church. Now you're gonna allow, so now all the churches have them, and a lot of churches are right in people's front yards. So now you got a sign flashing in somebody's front yard. Now we say, oh, well, we can regulate that. We can make sure that it's turned down, we can make sure. We all know that, how well do things get regulated here, you know, after hours, or on the weekends, or something like that? We do our best to do it, but think about if you live directly across the street from one of the churches, and you got this sign, and there's a glitch in it, and all day Sunday night, and all day Saturday night, you got this flashing light. Do we tell the Trophy Club Country Club? No, you can't have a sign. There's condos, or whatever we call zero lot lines, directly across from the two entrances to Trophy Club. It's closing on Monday. Sign goes out on Monday, all Monday night that sign's on. I just think this is a slippery slope that we go down. So I'm, I don't like a digital signage. I wouldn't have given it to schools in the first place, but I think we, as a body, I don't think this is so much imposing on the individual property owner. I think this is more, are we making sure that we're protecting those people that are going to be affected by this? Because this is, you know, light and noise, that's really where you, or chickens. Those three things are usually where you, where you find you're irritating your neighbor, right? Light, noise, and chickens. And so we gotta debate those things, and this, this is going to be a light issue. It may not be day one, but down the road it could become. So I think we've got to think of what impact this causes on our community and what these signs will look like, so I'm, I'm against it.
Jim, and then me.
Well, Garrett kind of stole my thunder, because that's the same points I was gonna raise as well. You know, I never forgot when Value Place first opened up, and they put their illuminated signs up, we heard nothing but people complaining about the brightness and the annoyance and the light, and I just don't want to sit back and say, yeah, well, let's, let's start setting precedent to do this all over town at various establishments, and churches, and businesses, and then people have to contact us and say, my house is being bathed in light all through the night because of a malfunction on one of these systems. And unless there was some remote control that the town had, that they could drive by and shut it off until repairs could be made, we face that challenge. So I go along with Garrett, I'm, I'm not happy about it.
I think the position of the sign doesn't really affect any current residents that much. It does affect drive-by, and it might affect future development, but I think every case has to be decided on its own. If there was a disturbance, and we felt like the lumens were too high, we could surely limit that. The only question I didn't ask of the manufacturer is, could it actually be on a timer that at 11:00 PM it went off and came on at seven? Is that possible?
It can be shut off at any particular time, or it doesn't matter, we can be, it can be shut off and re-give it the next morning.
All right, I would move that we approve the request for electronic sign, case ME 16002. Do I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further debate?
I'll just add one thing. The message board is five feet or six feet above ground. Those Value Places was like 40, 50 feet above ground shining down on a house. I just think it's a totally different aspect comparing it to Value Place.
Well, you've got two houses on Michelle Court, that the second floors of those houses could be bedrooms that face that sign, and if you were trying to go to sleep, and that sign was doing this, and you're trying to sleep, it's like one of the movies you see on TV with flashing sign outside the window keeps you up all night.
All right, I think Philip had his hand up, and then Ryland.
Since I'm the only one who hasn't spoken here, so. I, I think that, I think we've made a, a huge effort to limit signs. You know, we, we, over the summer, changed our sign ordinance, and because of the, just so many real estate signs, so many different type of advertising that was coming in, and, and we restricted it, even political signs. We've restrict, we've restricted as much as we possibly can to, to limit the amount of signage that we have throughout town. And I don't think there's probably none of us who have not heard raving reviews, compliments, thank you for doing what, what you're doing, especially right now in, in the political season, when you go to South Lake, you go to other communities, and intersections are just full of signs, you don't see that here. And so we've, we've, we've tried to limit that as much as possible. We've done a, a huge job with real estate signs. When I drive down Trophy Wood and turn right on Indian Creek, Roddy's house, I don't see 16 signs right there. I don't see them across the street anymore, they're gone. And, and that sign ordinance affected churches as well. You don't see the directional signage for the different churches that used to have those up. And so I, I agree with, with Garrett. I, I think that if you go to the churches on Indian Creek, and, and even the Methodist Church right now, that there's a sign out. So we're not limiting totally from them advertising with a banner, things like that. But I, I just think that a constant, constant, constant signage, have you ever received any complaints on the Beck property for the residents right there, by, by chance?
No.
Not that you know?
I don't think it's already there.
Yeah, but I, I just think that, I, I agree with, with Garrett. If, if you open this door, you have to open it up for all the others. It's hard to, to say, oh, well, you, you're in a residential area, we're going to not allow it for you. And so I just think that it's better, I, I think that we've made a concerted effort to, to try to control a proliferation of signage, and so I think that this is one area that we can control, and I think we should.
Ryland, you had your hand up, I think.
Yeah, when y'all mentioned light, it made me think of something. Okay, so so far tonight, I've gotten to mention the feds, and I've gotten to mention regulation, so I'm gonna make my hat trick here, and I'm gonna talk about Hamilton. Okay, when I go, I'm very sensitive to light. I am. You guys will probably see me wearing sunglasses more than anybody you know. When it's overcast, I wear sunglasses. Talking about light, when I go to my parents' house to visit in Hamilton, it is amazing how dark it is when I go into the bedroom to go to sleep, and they don't have curtains any different than I have curtains. We all have blinds, no curtains. And why is that? Streetlights. Streetlights push untold amount of light into people's homes, but why are they there? Well, it's safety, right? We, we just had a conversation a month ago about Parkview Drive, and there along where the park is, in between Beck and Medlin, you know, it's a safety hazard if people are parked there, and there's an event at one of the schools and, and whatever. Go there today and take a, at night, and see how dark it is in someone's front room that lives at 310 Parkview, and then do it again after we put those street signs, or streetlights in. So again, I just ask you, I ask you to, to think about yourselves. You're saying, we can impact other people because we think we're justified, because we're the government. So I'm for the sign.
All right.
I just want to go back to Philip's question to me, contradicts your position. You said, did anybody complain? And so the answer is no, so.
Well, my position is, is we've limited signage throughout town, and so my position is with, with bringing this in, you're going to increase that, and you, you run the potential of doing it at the Country Club, the Church of Christ, the Baptist Church, the Mormon Church. I mean, so you, you have the potential to increase what you've last summer tried to decrease.
I understand, but each, each case is a, you know, it's a case-by-case situation.
All right, Garrett, and then me.
So, comment, I understand the Honorable Councilman Rose's strategy here to, to say that I'm voting for something that's government, because he knows how much I despise the government. A good, good move, but.
It just hit me.
Let me, let me argue this. Streetlights are ambience, it's light, it's solid, it doesn't change. What we're talking about is a sign that can change every eight seconds, every 15 seconds, every 30 seconds, might be green. seconds, every thirty seconds, might be green, then it might be blue, then it might be red. There's a big difference between the, the beautiful glow of a dull yellow streetlight that hums in front of your house so peacefully while the government pays for that light to be on, as opposed to the Christmas jingle of red, green, blue, yellow. I just think that that is a nuisance. If I lived across the street from one of these churches and all of a sudden those lights and I, I, as, as much as I hate to say you can't have something, this is one of those cases that I don't think you should have it.
All right. So I said I was gonna speak and then Greg raised his hand and then Tim raised his hand and then Stephen raised his hand. So, and, and somebody in the audience raised his hand, which you're welcome to speak and I'll let you come before the rest of us. The, my point a little bit is this, and I understand the fear is you start this, it's a slippery slope. I understand that. But at the end of the day, every one of those is something you decide about. And when we have construction around town, we look at what is the light shield? Where does it go down on the residents? Where is it seen on the residents? And we haven't asked for that here, but, but in one sense, to Jim's point about the, the Michelle Court people, there's about a hundred foot worth of trees behind those homes. I don't think they're gonna see any light through those trees at this point. Of course, if the Methodist Church decides to build their buildings, they're gonna have more light from those buildings maybe than they will from this sign. But I think at the end of the day, the church has a right to try to do that. I don't think it's unrealistic to think that if we got complaints, asking them to turn it down, change the cycle, I suspect they're willing to do that kind of thing. I just wanted to ensure that we had the capability and what they were buying so they didn't come back later and say, we can't do that. I don't have a lot of concern about the people that move into PD 30 in the future. That sign will already be there. They will have moved there when it's there. So I think every one of those decisions we might make in the, in the future stands on its own and we look at it. I've got a streetlight that's on Trophy Club Drive that during the winter months, when I have no leaves on my trees, that I have to close extra drapes in my bedroom because that light from that streetlight that I threatened that I'm gonna shoot out, but I will not.
I'm so tempted. I'm so tempted.
Bother's me. Now, when, when the leaves come out, it's not so bad. I can't even see the thing. So I, I'm in favor of this particular situation. I'm not concerned about the slippery slope, so to speak. I think it's something we decide on as we have to deal with that issue. I think it's gonna look attractive to what they're doing. I think it will promote what they stand for. I think they're gonna be good neighbors and deal with that appropriately. So I'm gonna vote in favor. So I think Greg and then Tim, is that right?
Just a question, did we by any chance notify the two residents on Michelle Court?
No, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, was it?
No, sir.
No.
Tim?
All right. A couple of things. One is I'm, I'm a small government guy too, so. Two is I'd like to know who had the over/under at nine o'clock for when he would mention Hamilton? I owe him twenty dollars. Nine o'clock, all right. So took him, took him two hours tonight. I actually, as much as I, I'm worried about this sign, I'm dealing with the exact same, very similar in Mesquite, putting up a monument sign. They won't allow me to talk about signage. They're trying to beautify their neighborhood, have a pylon sign that's phenomenal. It's, you know, twenty feet high, ten feet across. And they came out and said, sorry, you have to put a monument sign in, can only be five feet high off the ground. It's gonna cost me twenty grand instead of, instead of what I have would have been two and I would have had ten times the size. And I'm dealing, that's what I was dealing with today as a matter of fact. And all to make sure that the residents feel better about what's going on over there. Small government guy, I think it's, it's legal, you gotta give it to them. I wish they would do it for me. But I, I do have an issue where I guess if you're putting anything up there like that, you should've, you know, I would think that you would contact the residents. But, you know, legally, I, I'm going through it. So I, I mean, you have to okay it because it's legal to do. So that's my opinion.
All right. Stephen had his hand up and then Jim and then we're trying to.
I just had a question for the signage company. Can the sign, does the sign have the capability of animations?
It does have the capability of animations. Not full video, but animations, yes.
It's a TV.
Uh, not really. It's a, it's electronic.
Ten years ago, ten years ago was an incredible TV.
Yes. And I think that this is a little more sophisticated when you look at it than what Beck and Byron had.
It is. It's gonna be higher res and therefore look better, I think.
Y'all don't, y'all don't go getting scared of technology again. Remember who stood alone for the cell tower.
All right. Stephen, did you get your answer?
Yes, sir.
All right. Jim and then we're gonna vote.
Yeah, just one quick point regarding the, the trees. As it currently looks from the aerial view here, the corner house on Michelle Court and Trophy Club Drive, right now, even though there are trees currently there, the upper floor and the side of that house is visible. But if the church were to continue with some project in the future, and I don't know what's on their, their books, there's a high probability based on the way that's laid out right now that the area adjoining Trophy Club Drive would be parking lot and, and a good possibility. So they can then have place to park cars to use the new buildings they build. And if that was the case, all those trees that are between those two or three houses on Michelle Court that back up to the church, might not have any buildings to block this sign. And if this sign was going through multiple color changes during the night or late into the evening, it could be a disturbance. And I think I, you know, would wanna consider those homeowners and their rights to not having that changing light and flashing light, animated light or whatever versus a steady state streetlight. And so that's just, just my comment on that.
All right. So we have a citizen who wanted to talk and maybe the pastor of the church, Edlin, wouldn't talk. He's standing, so maybe he's just tired of sitting.
Thank you. Chris Roush, two over Hill Drive, Trophy Club. I just wanted to, I've heard the term flashing and I just wanted to clarify that the sign will not do any flashing. That's not part of how it's gonna be programmed. But maybe more importantly, a couple of points. One, we are a, we are a good citizen group in this community. We're not looking to irritate the citizens. We're not looking to irritate our neighbors. We have five, six hundred people that, you know, a large portion of them live in this town. So we will cooperate with the town in terms of if there's something about the sign that you're not comfortable with, we can adjust it. But it's not gonna flash. We're not gonna construct it to be irritating. We don't mind turning it down at night. But what the church is doing, the church is here to serve. We serve the community. We serve a number of different needs of people in this community. We pack a hundred and thirty snack sacks for hungry kids every weekend at Northwest Schools. We support Gateway House in Grapevine. We do a lot of things. We have a lot of citizens who reach out to us when they've heard about something saying, can we join in that? Can we pack some snacks? Can we work on one of those wheelchair ramps? We've got children who wanna get community service hours with the schools. Our sign is to invite and inform and that's it. That's our intention and that's how we'll manage it. Thank you.
Thank you. Edlin, do you?
Any questions?
Edlin?
Edlin Cowley, five Brook Creek Court, pastor, senior pastor at Fellowship United Methodist Church. Just wanted to echo what, what Chris said. You know, if it's a certain time that we need to turn it off in the middle of the night, whatever, whatever we need to do to be a good neighbor, we'll do that. So just know that you have that commitment from us.
Thank you. All right. Are you ready to vote? All right. We have a motion to approve the request to install electronic sign at the Fellowship United Methodist Church, case ME 16002. All those in favor, show your hand. All opposed, same sign. We had four, so it passes. Kurt Slavat Sanders Rowe voted for. Reed Perrow Schaffner voted against. It does pass.
Thank you, Reverend.
We've already done item sixteen and item seventeen. Before we go into eighteen, would everybody be okay taking a break?
Sure.
All right. It is nine oh two. We will stand in recess. Council, if you will, come to order. It is ten minutes after nine. We are back from recess. Item number eighteen, consider to take appropriate action regarding the scope of the budget of the town hall project and discussion of same. This was requested by Councilmember Reed, I think, and one other councilperson, but I don't remember who. So whoever.
I had, I, I requested, I don't know who else did, but Tim, okay. So I don't know if I need to make a motion or if I can just kind of share why I put this on. Do you have a preference, Nick?
Just go ahead.
Okay. So I, I talked to Stephen about this earlier today and it's no secret, everybody knows I'm in the development business. And over the last couple of weeks, I've actually began to kick some projects off. So just like we're doing here, projects go from design, you know, land acquisition, design, bid process, then the implementation of that bid, right? You start to order your steel, you get your bids locked in. And we've been hearing this from, from our staff that, that costs are increasing by one percent, one and a half percent a month or something like that. So I'm kinda here to, to say to you guys tonight that I have firsthand experienced a rapid increase in pricing. And I'm not talking, and Tim, you can probably attest to this. The, the, the materials costs right now are increasing at such a quick rate that I can't get commitments for more than thirty days on my bids. If I don't put in my order within thirty days, the bid's no longer good. And that's, you know, that's not normally industry standard. You get forty-five, sixty, sometimes even ninety days. So that, what that leads me back to is, is two things. One, I have a serious concern that the hundred and twenty thousand dollars under budget that we're under right now is actually going to be a valid number. The second thing is I want to speak to the citizens in, and, and say that I, I think there's been some, some talk out there that because we're, we've shrunk the council chambers and we've changed some of the materials and we've, we've done some different things with the, with the landscaping, that we've diminished the quality of the building in some way. And, and I've heard that. I've got a couple of emails. I've, I've had some conversations with people that have said, why are you changing the quality? And so I wanted to, for the record, before I make my motion, state that the overall quality of the building, I don't believe has gone down. I think we've taken a few of the niceties, if you will, out of this building. And once again, I think we're a, Trophy Club, it's a government. This is a government building. It has a, a functional use. It, it's gonna house our police department. It's gonna house our city facilities and it's going to be a presentable building. I believe, this is my personal belief, that I was elected for a couple of different reasons, but for one reason in particular was we had a council before that got out of control with costs. It's what I believe. I think that's why I was, that's why I was elected. Call them liberal, call them progressive, call them whatever, but they were spending money freely. Our money, our tax dollars. This council has cut taxes, what, three years in a row now? Cut, cut, cut. We've been fiscally responsible. I think that we can deliver a quality product and we can be, be responsible about the way that we do it. So I don't want the citizens to think that we're delivering something that's not quality. So having said all that, I do wanna make two different motions on this, if that's allowed, Nick. And I wanna make them separate because I'd like to, there to be able to be debates on the issues. Is that, okay. So the first motion I wanna make.
One at a time.
Yeah, I wanna make them one at a time. We, we've gone back and forth about this, but I wanna make a motion that we remove the fencing around the police parking lot. We've gone back and forth over this, but that's the first motion I wanna make. And if I get a second, I'll speak to why.
I'll second.
Okay. This is something that can be bid, but if we take it out now, it can be taken out. I know that we were told that it was a, was a qualification to get additional monies that we put this fence around.
I think it was a wish.
Okay, it was a wish. I, I've gone online, I've looked at some aerials of other police departments. You look at Roanoke and, and Ryland's brought up a couple of other ones, there are police departments that are right near the highway. Stephen and I talked about this on the phone. There's, there's needs and there's wants and I firmly believe that that's a want that could be put in there sometime in the future. Going with what I said in the beginning, I have a concern that we're going to be over budget. I don't wanna commit over budget. I think I, I owe the taxpayers to come in at or below budget and I think that's a concern. So I, I'm gonna speak in favor of supporting removing the fence. If there's enough money somewhere down the road, then we could talk about putting it back, but I'd like to move forward with it not in there.
The entire fence?
The entire fence, correct, yes.
All right. I have a question. What was that dollar figure for the entire fence? Did we have that?
Approximately fifty thousand.
Five oh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I just. All right. Anybody else comments? Yes, Tim?
Yeah, I'll just say that I believe it's a want. I believe that the police department should have it in time, but there, I, I've also done some checking. There's some brand new, beautiful police departments out there that do not have fenced lots. And I know, I was actually at lunch with Ryland up in Plano when we parked right next to all the police officers' cars right there. So I don't think it should be a long-term thing, but to hold off for the year or if we have the extra fund, you put it back in. But, but I agree with Garrett, prices are increasing. I hope these guys get it in where they say, but just in case, I would hold off on it.
Jim?
Yeah. Going along with what Ryland said earlier about the roads and the fact that prices are escalating and Garrett just emphasized they're escalating, this fifty thousand dollar fence that we could put in today, which may be sixty by the time we get around to it in August or September, October, whenever, could wind up being a hundred and fifty thousand dollar fence if we put it off to some time in the future. And I, I know if, if the police chief said that he wants this for his parking lot to protect his equipment and the supplies and the vehicles themselves, you know, we, we hired this man to represent our police department and give us the best public safety we can get and control costs and everything else. If he wants it, then I'm all in favor of giving it to him.
All right. I, I probably will vote against the motion. However, I would be more comfortable supporting if in fact it was moved in a fashion that it was, get it as a separate bid so that we can make a decision about it. I've, I've encouraged several people that had concerns about what's been cut, what's the pricing, saying, we don't even have bids. We don't have really any true idea what the cost is gonna be. And, and I've said, I'll probably be able to take bets that says, when those bids come back, we're gonna be in a new meeting, trying to figure out, just like when you get ready to build your house, you begin to make decisions about things. I do think that, that the architects overdesigned. I, I think some of the decisions we've made as a body that, that have cut were very good, valid decisions to make and, and cut. But, but I do feel that there's some things I wish we would put in. But, so that's just my rationale at this point is I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against it at least at this point. Anybody else wanna make a comment?
I just think, I don't believe the hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a couple of years. And down the road, when the CCPD gets some more money, more funds into their account, they can build a fence. The fence is not affected by the bill, by the construction of the building. If it's some kind of foundation or some back wall that, if, if you don't do it now, it's gonna cost you three or four times. It's a fence. And so.
Well, my concern is I think, I guess the interpretation is what's being removed? Just the fence or what about the light standards and that kind of thing? You're just, you're just doing the fence?
Fence is the motion.
So, so to me, to come back later and add electricity for light standards and things is the big expense, not the fence. So is the fifty thousand just the fence?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, Ryland?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just reiterate because I mean, I've mentioned this particular item at a couple of different meetings in the past and I do agree that it's at this point not a necessity. and I do agree that it's, at this point, not a necessity. And I think, given where we know construction projects can go, it is our responsibility to go in with only necessities at this point. And if we have something that's not a necessity, that's in the building plan, we need to be heavily justifying it because we know there will be bumps in the road as this project kicks off. I've said it before, I want to go in, I want to go in as lean as possible so that I have as much flexibility as possible to make decisions down the road that may force us to spend money on those very necessities that we went in lean with. So that's why I support Garrett's motion.
Jim?
I have a question for Stephen. When CCB bumped up their number toward this project, was it specifically stipulated that this increase was to put in the fence? Is that a tie-in to what they gave us in an additional amount?
They did request that, you know, it seemed to be that their request would be inclusive of the fence being a part of the facility with the additional $100,000. Their specific request was the fence and then additional security features that would be mainly the security
Cameras.
Video cameras remain and be untouched or removed from the facility.
So if we take it out, they could theoretically take that portion of their money back and leave us back at square one?
Well, I mean, I assume, you know, until an interlocal agreement is, you know, agreed upon, then they can really, I assume, do whatever they choose as far as funding, so.
But there are other items inside the building that they could fund, which is more important than the fence.
I'm just saying how, what they thought when they gave us the money.
I think they, with the understanding that that was something that they would contribute to that, to take it off the table so that council could do other things.
Right.
And that would stay as part of the building.
I guess the other reason that I would vote no is, I don't want us to get in a situation, we still don't have the bids. I don't want us to get in the situation of cut, cut, cut too early. That's just me. We went through weeks of this discussion. We cut, we put back, we had back and forth on that. And so I think, just for me, I want to see what comes out. I realize it can be done later. It's kind of like the additional 12 parking spaces, or whatever those were. There are things that we may be faced with some harder decisions, I think. So that's just me at this point. So I think Garrett had his hand up, but I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I'll just make one more quick comment. Actually, I agree with you, Nick. We're going to have to make some hard decisions. We really are. They're coming, guys. I live it every day. And I'll just say this before we vote, or if anybody else has a comment. Jim is going to, and he spoke against us, but even in speaking against us, he said, we should give the police chief what he wants. I mean, we need to talk about what we need as a community, not what we want. I mean, we can give bureaucrats what they want all day long, and you get Washington DC. You know, our job was to be put up here to protect the taxpayers' money, and I think we've got to do that. So I'm going to vote in favor of my own motion. I'm sure nobody's surprised.
All right, Ryland?
Nick said something that kind of triggered a thought in my head that I've been having for a while. And in this case, he's accurate because this is something that's an external feature that can be added at any time. And that was actually one of my, that was one of my reasons for advocating that we not build it right away. Or wait and see, get further down the road in the project before we make a decision. But he said, we don't want to get caught cutting too much too early. I actually have a fear, and in this case, that's accurate, I actually have had a fear throughout all this of getting in a position to have to cut too late. Where we've already made decisions about the footprint of the building, or whatever else that has to do with infrastructural systems in the building, that once we hit that bump in the road, we've already committed ourselves down a certain path that we're committed to. So that's what's informing my philosophy of going in as lean as possible. As far as the money from CCPD, you know, we've had lots of philosophical discussions in the years that I've been on council for two years now about what we would like to see from CCPD in terms of funding. And with their fund, it's just like every other fund that the town has at its disposal. With me, it comes down to optimization of resources. We have a finite amount of resources in terms of financial, and we need to optimize those resources. If they can find $50,000 for something that there seems to be consensus that we can live without today, I mean, the mayor is speaking against the motion, but he is also saying that he would be in favor of bidding it out and making the decision later. So if what it sounds like, which is an overwhelming majority of the council, feels that this is something that can at least be deferred, if not left out, then why are they choosing to spend the money on it? I mean, I didn't, I want to get away from this idea that just because we're not the ones making the decision, that the bar is somehow lower, that it's okay for them to be less thorough in the justification when they commit funds. So just philosophically for me, I know we've said that before. We've had joint meetings with them where we've talked about it, and they've taken a big chunk right now to fund a great portion of the police department. So that's obviously a big positive, and it's helping this project. But, you know, if you got the money, let's use it.
Okay. Yeah, Tim?
I just want to make sure I get this out there. I think what we're saying is, we want to cut it from this plan, Jim. I don't think anyone is saying, we don't want to put in a fence. I think we're saying, we're going to delay it for a year when we have the money. I think, you know, to say that we don't want to give the police chief what he wants or what he needs, we allocated $200,000 to make sure they can run the town the way he needs to. We got him a police dog. We're behind him in everything he's doing. I would sit here and say 99.9% sure, within two to three years after that place is built, it's going to have a fence around it. I think it's being prudent with the dollars we have now, though. You know, we really have to be tight on it. So I would vote to delay it because of that, because it can be added later. So that's my say.
Stephen?
Yep, Mayor. I think this is something that we can, many items are being bid as ad alternates. And this is something that is, it's not necessarily a critical piece of design and construction documents. So what we do know is, Steel Freeman, our CMAR, is basically saying that every month, it's about $80,000. So really, what I want to try to do is get our construction documents done, moved forward, and not delayed so that we can get hard bids and we know where we're at. Removing a fence and adding as an alternate is not really going to impact those construction documents. So I feel okay that if we add that as an alternate and we can see how bids come out, and if we've got extra funds, I think that, you know, I'm more in favor of that than doing something that radically changes something more permanent that would delay us down the road, or delay us another few weeks or another month. You know, the other thing that we kind of need to know is the issuance of the funds. We've got our notice of intent out, and, you know, we have a ratings call next week with S and P, and it's to issue that full amount, the additional $100,000 from CCPD. So we need some clear direction tonight about what we're doing because we do. If that's the case, we have to revise what we're going to issue so that we can appropriately go to market.
Well, do we, does the council control that decision as to what CCPD does for, it is really CCPD reimbursing the town, isn't it?
That's correct.
The town is going out for the debt, CCPD is paying us for the note. So it's still under our purview.
That's right.
So was it direction, or was it a motion? Do we know?
What CCPDs?
What CCPD did that night? And what was the motion?
I couldn't date that.
We don't have their minutes?
That's why I raised the question, because if that's a tie-in and we take it away, they may take that portion of the money away. I don't know.
Do they put minutes online? I don't know.
I don't know if those are approved yet.
It's probably not approved because they hadn't had another meeting.
Right.
I don't know the exact language off the top of my head.
I believe, you know, I believe that the, you know, the two items were tied into the additional $100,000. They were, you know, I believe that they were fine with the additional $250,000, but with the, they put the $100,000 in specifically for the fence and specifically for the security cameras that they did not want to be removed.
Ryland?
I just want to reiterate, because what Stephen just explained is, I want everybody to remember this. For the last three meetings, we've been up here poring over, here's 15 grand, here's nine grand, should we cut this or not? We are so just nose-to-the-grindstone, serious about making this thing as lean as possible, and we've got a board of people going, oh, here's 100 grand. I don't want the town to operate that way, and I don't expect our boards, who we appoint, to operate that way.
All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, which is to remove the fence enclosure over the police parking area, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Harrow and Sanders against, everyone else for, it does pass. All right, Reed, you have the floor for another motion.
Yep. Second motion, and if I get a second, I will speak to it. I won't speak before. Is to remove the two holding cells that are designed right now in the police facility.
Well, second.
Okay, the logic behind this is, and maybe we can debate whether it should be one or two. I talked to Stephen about this, and I looked at the, I might pronounce it wrong. Is it the Blotter report? Blotter.
Blotter.
Blotter. If you look at the amount of space that the two holding rooms take up compared to the overall PD, compared to this overall building, and the amount of time that we use those. Our standard operating procedure is somebody gets, if there's something that's really bad, a domestic, they go to Denton, right? We don't have a jail, so we're dedicating all this space when we're looking, like what Ryland said. Remember, we've shrunk the council chambers five feet. We've moved everything, and we've gotten rid of a handicap ramp. We're trying to find all these little pieces, and we've got these two holding cells that are literally going to be used for a couple of hours every few years. And they're not cheap. These are expensive rooms. So the reason I make this motion is, we can take that out, and there's additional room that can be left there, whether it's for an office in the future, whether they use it for storage in the future or something. There's square footage that is there. And shame on me last council meeting for not voting to reduce the building by five feet. I was wrong. I was. I voted the wrong way. Ryland was right. Thanks for the nod.
Mark that on the video.
Yeah, mark that down. But it's an, they're two extremely expensive rooms that will literally get the littlest, least amount of use. I mean, remember, we took out the private restroom in the back that our employees could use when they're in the break room. They've got to walk all the way back up to the front. It's once again, we're cutting, cutting, cutting. Things that aren't wants, I mean, things that are necessary, we're leaving in this facility, but things that are nice to have, we can leave that space for a multitude of different things, but it's an expensive space per square foot. That's probably, besides maybe some of the computer rooms, some of the most expensive space we're going to have. And it's literally going to be the least-used space in the entire building. So because of that, I think we should take those out. I don't, Stephen and I talked, and I I mean, somebody convinced me that we need two holding cells in this PD, and I'll vote in favor of it.
What is the space? Just, I don't have it in front of me.
250, 300 feet. Been on the hallway. It depends on what you know.
Each, or total?
They're total. They're what, 10? I don't think just the holding cells, I don't think, are that large, but there's also the processing area.
The whole, that whole corner, what I'm saying is, take that out.
Processing area.
Yeah, put carpet there and.
There are toilets inside those rooms, I believe.
There's toilets inside the rooms, there's special toilets. The walls are reinforced.
If you ever wanted to add.
Literally, look at the reports. I mean, we.
To add
Bring nobody in.
A holding cell, you have to plum it now. I mean, and the plumbing of it, there's a cost to it, but it's not, you know, the walls are CMU walls. They're, you know, they've got toilets and things like that, so they are hardened. But if you, the plumbing aspect is, you have to plan for that today.
Ryland?
One, because of the fact that they're hardened, and there's all the security considerations that go into that, this space is space that's not going to be utilizable in any fashion if we change our minds in the future in terms of the dirt wall system because of that. I take it.
That's right.
Okay, just.
They're there.
They're there, and that's what they are. So Garrett referenced the five feet thing that we had on the docket about a month ago, where we talked about, the ship sailed on that. I don't think we can change the footprint at this point. But Chief Arata's point there was, if the five feet was reduced on that side of the building, the casualty would be one of the two holding cells. How often have we used, or how often would we use one? How often have we transported people to Denton? Who we, because I assume, out of all the transports we've done, maybe some of them we would still transport. I don't know. I'm not sure. It's not an operation I'm familiar with. But do you happen to have an idea of how many transports we've done in the last?
I don't have, I don't know. I know Chief Arata's out of town this evening, and I know Officer Burris was here earlier. I'm not sure if he had a call or something. I can tell you, we don't have a holding facility today. So I can't tell you if we would use one or not use one because it's not even an option in our current capacity. How likely is it to have two people detained at the same time is probably unlikely. Do I think one holding cell would be sufficient 90% of the time? Probably so. I mean, I think that I would probably speak and support one holding cell. I don't know if I would say that I would be in favor of two, of eliminating both.
All right. So I don't know if Greg had his hand up for it.
Garrett, would you be in favor of just plumbing one? And again, two, three, four years down the road, CCPD could come back, because it's just a matter of putting cameras in. Plumbing is the main issue, right?
We have to do the camera anyway because we have processing in that area. So anytime we bring somebody in, we want to fingerprint them, there's evidence, or if we've got to hold them for any period of time while we come in, you know, there has to be cameras there, so.
The cameras are already part of the package.
Okay, so that's.
They make the difference.
Do the cameras.
And you're talking about if we would, you're talking about plumbing it under the slab. You're talking about a couple pieces of PVC pipe.
It's just planning for it.
It might be $1,000 to plan for that, and it can be under there, and they can, I don't think that's a problem. But if you look at the details of these rooms.
No, I get that, but I mean.
Expensive. So yeah, if you want to put the plumbing underneath it, spend $1,000 doing that, that's fine, sometime in the future. But it's hard for me to support something when I say, this is literally something we never use. I mean, almost never use in this town. But yet, this new facility, we're going to spend per square foot almost the highest amount on.
Jim, and then me.
Well, I would simply say, number one, since I'm not a police officer and I've not been involved in arrests and holdings and so on, since Chief Arata's not here to speak on why he feels he needs those holding facilities, and also the fact we are changing the tenor of the town. PD 30 is going to be growing. We're going to have a lot of more transient people coming in for restaurants and clubs and stuff, and shops and stores. The Trophy Wood area is going to be growing now with the new restaurants going in there, the increased hotel traffic. What we haven't done in the past may not be a reflection of what's going to happen in the future as far as how many arrests or holds are necessary. And I just think, out of respect to the chief, we should at least have this discussion about that part of the building in the police department with the police chief present to voice his input before we make a decision to take something out of the police section of the building.
I agree with Jim. I would be more comfortable if I had other input to help me understand it better. And I think my memory is that those rooms were actually in the middle of the side of the wall. It wasn't necessarily at a corner. And so the fact that you cut down some construction for those, I don't think is a significant number personally. But I may be wrong. The hardening of them, I don't think is significant for that. And if you plumb for the toilet, adding the toilet isn't necessarily a big deal. But, so I'm just not in favor of making that decision without hearing what the chief thinks about it. I think it's much harder to add it later if you. the chief thinks about it. I think it's harder, much harder to add it later, if you were going to add it later. That's just me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak in favor of Garrett's motion, because I think one, one thing that you're gonna need, you're gonna need storage. Um, I don't think that we have enough storage in this, and, and I, I took a tour, if you want to call it, a tour of the animal holding facility that we have now, and was shocked at all of the stuff that we have back there. And I have no idea where we're going to put that in this new building. It's stuff that I think is going to eventually go for auction, but it's got to be stored somewhere. So I, I don't think we have enough storage. And then I was equally shocked to learn, and I, I got two conflicting stories, so I don't know, but that, that one of the cost-saving measures that we didn't vote on, uh, was to eliminate water and, and sewer from the animal holding facility. Um, so, a- and I think that we made it a priority to add that animal holding facility. And so, so I, I just think that there are things that perhaps we don't know that have been cut, and I agree with Garrett. We, we haven't had one for 30 years. We haven't had holding facilities for 30 years. You arrest somebody, you're going to go to Denton County. That's where the holding is. And we, we've also explored other alternatives. We've talked about Rowan Oak, we've talked about Keller. So it may not always be Denton County. And so I think I agree with Garrett on this one.
All right, Garrett, you had your hand up, and then Greg has his hand up.
I just got to make one comment. One, I didn't know that Chief Arada wasn't going to be here tonight. But two, I just want to point out, if we're talking about people that are being absent and withholding a vote, let me bring back this counsel. I emailed quite a few of you guys specifically when the drug dog conversation came up, and asked for that vote to be delayed so that I could give my input. That was promptly shut down, so I'm not waiting for somebody else. I'm going to extend the same courtesy that a few people up here extended to me. I asked to be included in a conversation, I was shut down. So if somebody's not here, they don't get, they don't get to voice their opinions unless it...
Greg, did you have a comment?
I'd like to amend the motion to plum for one holding cell.
I'm okay with that.
Second? You second that?
Under, you're saying under the slab?
Oh, just on, yeah, whatever, $1,000, whatever.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can...
All right, discussion on the amendment.
Oh, no, not on the amendment.
I think it's a great idea. Anything that you might want to do to your, in your slab, you gotta do it now. And plumbing is among the worst of those to have to retrofit. Um, so not only that, but knowing the, the low marginal cost of that, I would encourage staff to potentially think about, there might be one or two other little places in the building where that might be prudent. Um, so, you know, I definitely am in, in favor of the motion as amended.
All right. You have a motion to amend. Anybody else? Tim?
No, not, not in the amendment.
All right. All in favor of the motion to amend, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Jim is opposed. It does pass. You're back to the amended motion.
I have a question on that.
Yes, Tim?
What type of dollars are we talking about? If you guys have kicked it around, if we only plum for one, and we pull out the two right now, what, what type of money are we talking about saving?
Plumbing will cost you... I, I don't like to guess, but it's probably a couple grand to do it.
But we're, but we're talking about a per square footage, like what you said, the savings per square foot of not building it is, is about what? Is it $500 a square foot?
Here's the thing, is that you're still building, those holding cells are in the, are in the northeast corner. So you're still building your slab there. So you're still spending the money for the walls. What you're not doing is building the interior spaces, you're building those differently. So in terms of savings, it wouldn't be like you're eliminating part of the building, you're eliminating the finish out. And so your finish out is, is more expensive because of the purpose that it's being served. Um, you know what one of those cells costs? Probably 10 grand.
So are the walls still hardened then?
Since you're still building it, I, I mean, I don't think you're going to save...
Yeah.
That much at all. That's, that's what I'm trying to ask.
Yeah, you're not shrinking the building, you're just not doing the benefit. So you're saving a few thousand bucks.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'd like to know, is from, from doing the cells, not doing the cells, we're only saving a few thousand dollars. But we're adding space, better use of space.
You're, you're changing the space use.
Probably the biggest savings would be the camera that we had right above the processing area, which was a 360 camera, which is pointing down, and can also see the cells and see processing of evidence and all of those types of things. If you're just wiring for that, and, because you don't need a camera if you're not having the cells, that, I mean, that camera right there...
Well, you still have to have a camera for evidence processing and making sure chain of command, or chain of custody and all that.
This was the processing of persons that are going in the holding cell. That's a different area. Uh, that camera alone is a couple, a couple thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, but the hardening of the room has got to, got to be a huge expense. It's, 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 because we were always told...
I mean, that's what they told us, to us, right?
I have somebody wanting the floor, so please wait till you get recognized. Garrett?
Tim, so I'll answer this. Think about how much it costs you to build a, a ADA compliant restroom. You're almost 10 grand for one, right? When you do, do them standalone. So you basically got two rooms that are about ADA restroom size, a little bit larger. So you figure, let's say they cost 10, eight grand apiece, 10 grand apiece. And then you have the additional hardening, and so I, I disagree that it's a few grand. I would guess it'd probably come out to be 20, 20 grand or something like that, would be my guess in savings. I was thinking with the...
But if you plum it, you can still retrofit it.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, if you plum it, that gives you some flexibility in terms of being able to come back and add something later. If you don't plum it...
You have to plum it.
You basically won't have it ever. There's not a whole lot you can do.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Without it being very, very costly.
Okay, we have a motion that has been amended on the floor, and the motion as amended is to remove, um, the two holding cells, but to plum for one holding cell. Is that the way everybody understands it?
Correct.
Garrett, is that the way you understand it? All right. All in favor of the motion as amended, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Harrow and Sanders vote against, everybody else votes for. It does pass. All right, uh, can we move forward to 19? All right, item 19. Consider taking appropriate action regarding a resolution repealing resolution number 2015 dash 23 and adopting a new resolution, appointing a town council liaison to serve on the animal shelter advisory board, reaffirming existing documents and providing an effective date. Uh, there's an attached 2016 oh eight as, uh, the new resolution. And if you make the motion, you should include who should be the council liaison, uh, so it's taken care of.
I'll make a motion, uh, to repeal resolution number 2015 dash 23 and adopt resolution 2016 dash oh eight, appointing Philip Schaffner to serve as the town council liaison to the animal shelter advisory board, and reaffirming all existing appointments effective today, Tuesday, March 22nd.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Ro, a second by Lamott, approving, uh, the resolution and naming Philip Schaffner as the liaison. Any discussion?
He's a good liaison.
Hearing none. Did you want to say something, Philip?
No, no.
You're going to vote for yourself?
Well, I just, you know, uh, the reason I actually added this, and I think that there's, there's several things that we, um, that we've tasked them with that have not come back to us. And I think there's a tie-in sort of with the animal shelter, with Parks and Rec, which is kind of, kind of what I thought that the two should be sort of, sort of together like that. So that's why I added this.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Item 20. Items for future agenda to include discussion of agenda items for consideration on the upcoming regular session council agenda for April 12th, 2016, meeting and discussion of the town council future agenda list. So you have two items, pages 388 and, uh, 389, which is next meeting. And I had one question that dealt with item 12A, uh, which was the item that Councilmember Reed placed there about hours of the park. It's really a question for staff. Um, i- is there a way to get that moving forward? This thing has been there for a long time. Uh, summer hours for parks are going to start. Um, so I, I'm just really kind of saying, can we move it forward? If not, that's fine, but I just wanted an answer.
Which item? I'm sorry.
The park hours.
12A, it's the park hours.
12A.
Maybe it requires more research, I don't know.
Yeah.
I think we could just say it's 10:30 or 11:00.
It'd be nice to have something to act on sooner rather than later.
Can we try to get it for the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
And we discussed that, and we discussed it with, uh, Chief Arada as well, and, uh, he had, you know, he expressed that he had no concerns with safety of the park or anything like that, uh, regarding changing it to 10 or...
Right.
Or whatever, uh, the council wished.
I think there's some concern about there being, um, if it's 2 o'clock in the morning, what do you do? And if you have, you know, other, you know, if there's something there, how do you, how do you ensure that, uh, like fugitive games don't happen? Because, well, technically the parks open. And so I think, I think if we set the appropriate time at 10 o'clock or something like that, then I think that that would cover what I think the intent is.
Yeah, the, the intent is, right now, the, it's vague in that it's dusk, dusk till dawn.
That's right.
And so this came up with the, same person lives down the street from here, someone was playing basketball, and the police said you need to leave, and they're like, it's not dark yet. So now you got to debate between...
And there are lights on.
What, what time it is.
There are lights on to illuminate what I'm doing.
Uh, uh, the reason I put this on, I'm looking for a definite...
Yeah.
The parks, the parks close at 11 o'clock, or the parks close at 10:30.
Okay, so we're not debating the issue, it's just can we get it on the next one?
Yeah, we can.
All right. Anybody else have something on the next meeting? Greg?
I'll defer to Councilman Schaffner. Do you want the wristband on the next agenda?
I would think that that will come from, uh, Parks, from Adam. I mean, I don't think there's a rush on it.
It's 4th of July.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's a rush.
Why is that our decision?
Well, it's going to come before us, but I don't think it, I don't think you necessarily have to have it on the next meeting.
I don't think I'm quite ready for that, yet. I think I, I'd like to, I would like to have some time to sit down with staff and kind of think about logistics, so that if you guys ask questions, we can answer them intelligently.
So the only thing I will, uh, mention on this particular agenda, Holly and I have been communicating, um, typically in April, we pass a proclamation for, uh, National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and representatives from, uh, Denton County's, uh, Child Advocacy Center come, and we hadn't been able to confirm that, but, uh, that might appear on the 12th if, if that's the date they're going to come. We just hadn't been able to confirm. All right. Um, then that would lead us then to future agenda list. Does anybody have anything on the items? Um, we, we've dealt with item seven, talking about it tonight. That was the reminder that came up on our agenda. Uh, anything to add, or items that you're trying to get pushed through? Anybody?
Not here.
All right. Um, uh, council, um, we have finished our agenda, we do have an executive session item agenda, however, I don't think that we have any new information, uh, to consider. Does anybody, um, want to go into executive session pursuant to those things that are there? All right, hearing none. I would, uh, then item 22, we didn't go into executive session, so we're not going to take action. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Ro moved, Kurt seconded. We are adjourned at 9:51.